The Speaker. The Speaker. The Speaker. The Speaker.
Moro Batangas.
Si Aylin, si Aylin Chasimarpi.
Gobre Mulia.
Si Aylin Chasimarpi.
Happy Birthday.
Now? The session is now called to order. Please rise for the invocation to be delivered by Honorable Yanda Bolivia of the 4th District of Batangas. Let us all put ourselves in the presence of the Lord. Heavenly Father, we stand before you in this sacred and august hall to ask for your blessing upon the members of this house, the leaders of our country, and the citizens of this great nation. Almighty God, thank you for today and for the opportunity to serve the people that you love. You have entrusted us as stewards of your creation. As we gather this afternoon, we ask that you lead and guide us, enlighten our hearts and minds, and help us to make decisions that will be pleasing to you. Help us to listen and to fully understand the things to be discussed so that we will find common ground through which we can agree and come up with lasting solutions. Lord God, Counselor of all, may your eyes not be blinded to see the truth and obedience to your will. May you shower us with courage to do what is right, no matter how difficult or unpopular. Give us your grace that we may effectively do our part as public servants. Bless our plans and programs for the common good and for your greater glory. Bless our only beloved homeland, the Philippines. All these we ask in your glory and praise. Amen. Kindly remain standing for the singing of the national anthem. Bayang magiliw perasang silang anan. Alam ng puso sa dipid moy buhay. Lubang hiniram buyan ka ng magiliw. Sa manlulupi kita pasisinil. Sa lalat at bundok sa simoy at sa langit ng bata. May nila kantula at awit sa paglayang nilamahan. Ang isap ng wata at moy ng umpay na rapihingin. Ang pituming na paraw niya kayla ang may magidiling. Luban ang araw ng wata ang itbangsik na. Uyayangis sa dipid. Aming likaya dapat may mahapin at mapatay ng taliyo sayo. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I will move to defer with the calling of the roles.
Any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Chair, Madam Speaker, I move for the deferment of the approval of the journal. So move.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we now proceed with the reference of business and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as the communications and the committee reports.
Mr. Speaker, any objection? Chair hears none. Secretary General is directed to read the reference of business.
Reference of Business: Bills on First Reading. House Bill Number 5556, Providing for the Remedy of Filing a Petition for Sursherai to the Supreme Court to Review the Decisions of the National Labor Relations Commission, Representative Nocrales Jerico.
To the Committee on Labor Unemployment.
House Bill Number 5557, Integrating the Teaching of Road Safety Education as Part of the Curriculum of the K-12 Program, Representative Babasa.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill Number 5558, Declaring the City of Pagadilla in the Province of Zamboanga del Sur as the Regional Center of Region 9 Zamboanga Peninsula Region, Representative Babasa.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill Number 5559, Creating an Additional RTC Branch in the Province of Zamboanga del Sur to be stationed in the Municipality of San Miguel, Representative Babasa.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill Number 5560, Reapportioning the First Legislative District and the Sanguniang Panduson Seats of the City of Caloocar, Representative Malapitan.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill Number 5561, Regulating the Packaging, Use, Sale, Distribution, and Advertisement of Tobacco Products, Electronic Nicotine Delivery Systems, Electronic Non-Nicotine Delivery Systems, Representative Alonte.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry and the Committee on Health.
House Bill Number 5562, Rationalizing the Administration of All Public Basic Education Schools Nationwide, Representative Alonte.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill Number 5563, Reorganizing the Comelec Offices, Representative Bagatzing.
To the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill Number 5564, Creating a Mandatory Free Soup Kitchen, allocating 3% of all of the Internal Revenue Allotment for every impoverished barangay in the city or municipality, Representative Bagatzing.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill Number 5565, Upgrading the Service Capacity of the Hospital ng Paranyake in the City of Paranyake, Metro Manila, from the first level to the second level community hospital, Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill Number 5566, Ensuring public access to official records, documents, and any other information of public concern, Representatives Zerate, Gaite, Culyamat, Castrofranz, Brosas, and Elago.
To the Committee on Public Information.
House Bill Number 5567, Mending Section 5 of RA Number 8498 for the Philippine Science High School Systems Act of 1997, Representative Flores.
To the Committee on Science and Technology.
House Bill Number 5569, Mending Section 5, Paragraph 3 of RA Number 9225, Otherwise Known as the Citizenship Retention and Reacquisition Act of 2003, Representative Garcia Pablo John.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill Number 5570, Augmenting the Employee Benefits for the Solicitors of the Office of the Solicitor General by Providing Retirement, Death, and Survivorship Benefits, Representative Revilia.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill Number 5571, Establishing the Nueva Ecija University of Science and Technology Academic Extension Campus in the Municipality of Santo Domingo, Province of Nueva Ecija, Representative Swansing Estrelita.
To the Committee on Hire and Technical Education.
House Bill Number 5572, Exempting from the Income Requirement the Capital Town of a Province Without a City, Representative Hofer.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill Number 5573, Providing for Additional Support and Compensation for Educators in Basic Education, Representative Si Alvarado.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
House Bill Number 5574, 25578, Converting various provincial roads into national roads in the Province of Palawan, Representative of Wexaldivar.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill Number 5581, Codifying the Alternative Child Care Laws, Representative Romualdes Yeda, Romualdes Ferdinand.
To the Committee on Welfare of Children.
House Bill Number 5582, Granting Civil Service Eligibility to Government-Paid Personnel who have rendered at least 12 consecutive years of efficient service under temporary status, Representative Almario.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
Resolutions. House Resolution 541, Correcting the Clerical Error on the Resolution Entitled "A Resolution Appealing to the Government and Private Sector to Implement on an Experimental Basis the Proposal of a Four-Day Work Week," Representative Berzaga.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation and the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Resolution 542, Directing the Committees on Information and Communications Technology, and Banks and Financial Intermediaries, and Other Appropriate Committees to Investigate on the Supposed Violation on Online Lending Institutions on the Provisions of RA Number 10173, also known as the Data Privacy Act of 2012, Representative Pineda and Romero.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolutions 543 and 544, Expressing the profound sympathies and condolences of the House on the death of Mr. John L. Gokongway Jr., a highly respected business leader and a well-loved philanthropist, Representative Lagun and Olivares.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 545, Urging strongly the Philippine Congress to appropriate funds to avert the worsening crisis in the rice industry and to amuldermate the sufferings of our farmers due to unimpeded importation of rice, Representative Kabatbak.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
House Resolution 546, Directing the Committee on Agriculture and Food to inquire on the Status of the National Irrigation Administration's Irrigation Projects throughout the country and its ability to effectively address the irrigation needs of the agriculture sector, Representative Inverga.
To the Committee on Rules.
Committee Report. Report Number 91 of the Committee on Poverty Aveliation on HR Number 551.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Madam Chair, Speaker, may we greet the guests of Anwaray Partilis Honorable Florentio Bem Noel, Masters in Management Students of Late Normal University Graduate Schools.
The visitors of Anwaray Partilis kindly rise. We would like to welcome you to the House of Representatives. Enjoy your stay. Majority Leader.
I move to suspend Madam Chair.
Session suspended.
Session resumes. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the guests of Congressman Rosano Rufino Biason from the Lone District of Montinlupa. They are as follows: Joanna Lumaban from Bayanan Elementary School, Ron Nathaniel Pacoma, Sukat Elementary School Annex, Danielle Rain Cruz, Maria Ferrari School, Rona Joy Tamundong, Montinlupa National High School Main, Christopher Colliado, Yasdo Staff, Annabelle Buena, Yasdo Staff, Annie Pesito, Coordinator, Marisel Merabuena, Coordinator, Rosemarie Taupo, Coordinator, and Joseph Opro, Coordinator.
The guest of Honorable Rupi Biason is recognized, please rise. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, likewise, I move that we recognize the guest of Honorable J.J. Suarez from... The Barangay Health Workers of the Second District of Quezon Province, headed by Jamel Mora, the Provincial President of the Barangay Health Workers of Quezon Province.
The guest of Honorable J.J. Suarez is recognized, please rise. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, under the calendar of business for the day, I move that we consider House Bill Number Seventy-Eight, under Committee Report Number Five, and request the Secretary General to be directed to read the title of the bill, of the measure.
Ah, the Secretary General is so directed, to read the title.
House Bill Seventy-Eight, An Act Providing for the Definition of Public Utility, Further Amending for the Purpose Commonwealth Act Number One-Four-Six, otherwise known as the Public Service Act, as amended.
Majority Leader.
The status of the bill is under the period of interpolation, and I would like to recognize Representative Sharon Garin as the sponsor of the bill.
Representative Sharon Garin is hereby recognized to sponsor the bill.
Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, may we recognize Honorable J.J. Suarez for his interpolation.
Ah, the Honorable Suarez is hereby recognized for his interpolation.
Thank you very much, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, will the good sponsor of the said bill yield to a few clarificatory questions regarding the proposed measure?
Yes, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, for the past few weeks and months have gone, we've tackled this bill vigorously with a lot of comments coming from our distinguished colleagues in the House. This representation would like to be clarified with a few issues that the bill tackles, specifically in the issue of public utilities and public service. Would the good sponsor please enlighten me to what the difference is between public service and public utility?
Public ser... Mister Speaker, public service is a broader classification than public utility. The public service is... All public utilities are public services. So, public services can actually cover transportation, telecommunications, even historically it included ice storage, warehouses. While public utility, the significance of the terminology, I would say, is more on the significance of our constitutional provisions in which public utilities are limited to a sixty-forty equity requirement in relation to foreign ownership, Mister Speaker.
So, it is therefore, Mister Speaker, the objective of the bill to redefine and gives specific characteristics to what utilities are under public service? Is that correct, Madam Sponsor?
Mister Speaker, in a way, it is not a rare definition of a certain concept. It is the clarification of what is the definition, because there has been different takes on the jurisprudence, as well as other sources, whether domestically or internationally. The term "public utility" in some occasions have been interchanged with "public service", and in some occasions, the definition of "public utility" has been different depending on the generation, as well as the source of the decision. So, just to be clear on it, the proponents of this bill have set a certain guideline into which how we define "public utility", as far as our legislative body is concerned, as far as our laws are concerned, as well as the Constitution, Mister Speaker.
Kung sa ganun, mahal na tagapangulo, ano ngayon ang mapapabilang sa ilalim ng public utilities? Sa isinusulong na batas?
Sorry. Mister Speaker, the amendments that are proposed under the current bill is actually not merely a list, but it is a definition of what is public utility. It basically requires that all... If there is a public service and it meets all these four criteria, then it is classified as a public utility. Hence, we define it as a, number one, a person that regularly supplies, transmits, and distributes to the public through a network of commodity or service, of public consequence, that is a natural monopoly, that it is necessary for the maintenance of life and occupation, and lastly, the person is obligated to provide adequate service. And based on this definition, what we have as a list that is definite are the four utilities that we have identified, which is the distribution of electricity, the transmission, water pipeline distribution, and sewage pipeline, Mister Speaker.
So, let me run that by again, Mister Speaker. So, electricity, transmission, electrical distribution, and water distribution and sewage.
Correct, Mister Speaker.
So, everything else outside that falls under public utility? Am I correct?
If it falls, Mister Speaker, if it falls under the definition, then Congress can legislate and identify it as a public utility. It is not a closed list, Mister Speaker. It is open to further additions or subtractions, let's say, in case the situation changes, but the list is not closed. What is more definite here is the definition of what is public utility, Mister Speaker.
In more specified terms, Mister Speaker. So, telecom, transportation, port services, these will fall under public utilities?
Those four identified, no, Mister Speaker. Based on the definition, it would not be a public utility. Public service, yes, but public utility, yes.
So, under the Public Service Act that's being proposed, it is therefore possible that if passed into law, one hundred percent foreign ownership of these public services will be allowed?
Yes, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, one hundred percent public... foreign ownership of these public services, telecom, transportation, port services, these touch on national security matters, Mister Speaker. For example, telecom. Kung ang telecom po natin, ay hahayaan natin ang mga dayuhan ang magpatakbo nito, paano po natin matitiyak na ma-classified information na pinag-uusapan ang iba't ibang mahensha, ng ating military, ng ating gobyerno, ay secured at hindi napapakinggan ng sinuman dito sa ating bansa?
Mister Speaker, if the concern is national security, then let's flip the coin. What services are we giving to our fellow Filipinos? In terms of telecommunications, I think everybody is witness to this, that telecommunications services in the Philippines is poor compared to other countries. We need to improve this in one way. This is not the only solution to the problem, but it is possible that the proposal to open up telecommunications to foreign investments would improve services and lower the cost, and the major beneficiaries with that would be each and every Filipino. But I understand the concern of the good interpolator in terms of national security. Hence, in the proposed bill, we are proposing a further amendment in which we propose to add another section, in which I will read it for the consumption of the good interpolator, that "In the interest of national security, the President, after review, evaluation, and recommendation of the relevant government department or administrative agency, may suspend or prohibit any proposed merger or acquisition transaction or any investment in a public service that effectively results in the grant of control, whether direct or indirect, to a foreigner or a foreign corporation." This basically, if there is a proposed merger or entry of any foreign investor that would give them control over telecommunications and transportation, and there is a clear threat to our national security, then the President can validly intervene, suspend, or prohibit said transaction. So, there is still a way to secure in case there is impending threat to our national security, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, again, the good sponsor mentioned two vital topics. Number one, improving service, and number two, national security. Again, in national security, you mentioned, the good sponsor mentioned, that the President has the authority to determine if national security so requires that he or she will intervene. But shouldn't we, as congressmen, those who pass the law, ensure that national security is intact, protected, prior to even the intervention of the President, Mister Speaker?
Mister Speaker, I agree, but also, the President also has the authority and also has the discretion. In fact, our Constitution empowers the President to intervene in such transactions in some cases of national emergency, Mister Speaker. So, it is not unusual to empower the President. Of course, as legislators, the Congress also has the power to intervene in any transactions that would involve national security, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, dahil kung ganun, ay di hindi siguro masama na ipanukala na patatagin na muna natin ang seguridad ng ating bansa bago nating pag-usapan kung ano pa no pang mga bagay-bagay na maaring maging takot, pangamba sa ating makababayan tungkol sa issue ng seguridad ng ating bansa. Hindi po kaya pabor ang ating mahal na sponsor sa pakiusap na ito?
What I'm trying to say, Mister Speaker, is isn't it necessary that we put in first the necessary safety nets and safeguards? Because in opening up and liberalizing these public services, this comes with, yes, opportunities, and also, number two, threats and concerns. And if we do not put these necessary safeguards, safety nets, to protect national security, baka naman mauuna pa natin ibigay ang biyaya na hindi pa natin natitiyak na makikinabang ang ating bansa dito?
Mister Speaker, I understand the concern of the good interpolator. In fact, if you... But if you view the other jurisdictions, for example, in the European Union, they also have a committee that reviews transactions that may affect, in fact, even the environment, the economy, the psychology of the Europeans. And in the same way that the US also have the Committee on Foreign Investments, and they are tasked to review any mergers or acquisitions of foreign investors. In this case, in our proposal, Mister Speaker, we have adopted a more similar, but a little more general, because going into specifics of how to address or to tackle national security in terms of business and investments would be more... It would be more prudent to have it... the parameters set by our economic managers, as well as the NEDA, the DOF. Hence, we have added here that once this... Should this bill be passed, NEDA, together with the administrative agencies, together with PCC and the President National Security Commission, rules and regulations will be set headed by NEDA. So, we... The authors deemed it more prudent to set this apart from the main bill para mas thorough yung pag... Because we have to consider how do we handle those that are already here? How do we handle those who are coming in? And any future situations that we have? So, I think our economic managers, our economists, and also our National Security Council would be more in a position to set the parameters in how these foreign investors would come in, Mister Speaker.
So, therefore, it is my understanding, Mister Speaker, that we will entrust a lot of these responsibilities to our existing agencies and offices and other regulating bodies? Is that correct, Madam Sponsor?
Mister Speaker, with this bill, with the proposed amendment to the current bill, the current amendment, then they will be empowered and authorized, as well as mandated, to do so, to tackle, to discuss the topic, and set rules and regulations on such issues, Mister Speaker.
But let us understand, Mister Speaker. These agencies and regulatory bodies were formed and created following our Constitution, where sixty-forty foreign ownership was strictly and specifically implied. So, my question is, Mister Speaker, here we have a scenario that we are liberalizing a lot of these public services, allowing one hundred percent ownership. However, the regulating bodies, the agencies that are tasked to make sure that they are able to do their job, were created following a Constitution that prescribed sixty-forty ownership. How does the good sponsor meet those ends, Mister Speaker?
Mister Speaker, ERC is the Administrative Agency for Electricity, for example. The powers and functions of ERC does not change whether this bill passes or not. In the same way that CAP and CAAB, their powers and functions will still be same. If there is a requirement of franchise, there will still be a requirement for franchise. If there is a requirement for any authority certificate, or any... If ERC requires a certain electric company to submit for their CAPEX or for their rate setting, then that will still apply whether this bill will pass or not. In the same way that in any public service, whether it's for transportation, LTFRB, the powers and functions of this agency will still stay the same regardless of the nature of ownership of the company. So, this has been specifically stated in the proposed bill that the administrative agencies will still hold their authority over these industries. In fact, with the changes that we have proposed, more stringent laws will apply as well on their penalties, as well as on their procedures. So, we have made changes in order to better protect also, not only the industry, but also the Filipino consumers, Mister Speaker.
So, what the good sponsor is saying, Mister Speaker, and she can correct me if I'm wrong. We are saying that for transportation, for example, LTFRB, LTO are equipped enough to handle one hundred percent foreign ownership. Philippine Ports Authority is properly equipped to handle companies of one hundred percent foreign ownership. National telecommunications agencies are equipped to handle one hundred percent foreign ownership. Is that correct, Mister Speaker?
Yes, Mister Speaker, because the service will still be the same. It will be a service done here in the Philippines, serving the Filipinos. So, the same will still cover, only the ownership will change, Mister Speaker.
Kasi sa nakikita natin ngayon, mahal na tagapangulo, itumahensang ng banggit natin, ay kasalukuyan pa natin pinalalakas para lang matiyak yung pangangailangan ng Pilipino ngayon. Ngayon pa lang ito, pinalalakas na natin sila, para lang sa pangangailangan natin ngayon. Paano po natin sasabihin na pag pumasok na po ang mga one hundred percent ownership at mga dayuhan dambohalang foreign corporations, na may kakayanan din sila na siguraduhin? Na handa din silang imo? din silang imoderate, i-regulate ang mga ganitong mga pangyayari, kung ang batas na ito ay magiging, ay mai-implement?
Mr. Speaker, if a foreign company or a foreigner wants to operate an airline industry in the Philippines, it will still be subject to franchise requirements, as well as route requirements by the CAAB or CAP. The same will still apply. They will still operate in the Philippines. Regardless of ownership, all the rules that are applicable to the current operators will still be applicable to new operators, whether they're Filipinos or non-Filipinos, Mr. Speaker.
Will the good sponsor prescribe to my suggestion that maybe we should first strengthen, empower, equip these agencies, these regulating bodies, prior to liberalizing services in our country?
Mr. Speaker,
Kasi, ang, sorry, Madam Sponsor, kasi ang mangyayari po dyan ay para maglalaro po tayo ng basketball na wala pong rules. Tayo, juniors division, kaslang oras na binuksan natin dito, papasok na ang mga pro players. Paano kaya po ang pangyayaring yun, at hindi pa yata handa ang mga referee natin sa larong yun?
Mr. Speaker, like in basketball, you have five players, and all these five players have to be harmonized and synchronized. The same way that NEDA, through Secretary Peria, DOF, to Secretary Dominguez, have expressed the urgency, as well as the president during the Sona, has expressed that all these measures are essential for the growth of the Philippines. It is a synchronized changes and different, through different legislations, whether Retail Trade Act, the changes in the Foreign Investments Act, changes, the tax reforms up to package four, including the PSA, have been mentioned by our executive as necessary elements for the growth of the Philippines to reach 6.8 or 7 this year. In the same way, Mr. Speaker, that it is not just an amendment to the PSA that is necessary. We also need good infrastructure, the ease of doing business, all this are essential to the growth. It is not just because we need to do one, we need to abandon another one. We have to do all of this at the same together. Now, if we need to strengthen all these agencies, it should be in harmony, and it should not be reason enough to abandon the amendments for the PSA, the amendments for the Retail Trade Act, because these are priority bills that have been expressed by our economic managers, our economic experts, that are essential for the growth. And everything, one is not more important than the other, everything has to go in synchronized as well, Mr. Speaker.
So therefore, Mr. Speaker, may I ask the good sponsor, are there any pending bills in the House of Representatives right now that hopes to strengthen, empower these agencies and regulating bodies in relation to the proposed measure that she is pushing?
Mr. Speaker, I cannot cite anything particular, but we have 50 committees in Congress, and all these committees are always reviewing the powers and functions of many of these administrative agencies. But, the same way that in the economic team, we have tackled as well the reforms on the NIRC, the reforms on the Retail Trade Act, as well as the Foreign Investments Act, and many more, Mr. Speaker. So, this legislative actions are ongoing, and some are about to finish, some are about to start, and like this, this is still ongoing, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker,
Yes, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, with the indulgence of our sponsor, Interpretor, I move that we temporarily suspend the interpolation of this measure. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The chair is here is none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we call the roll of the honorable members. So move.
The Secretary General is our director.
Roll call of members, honorable representatives. Abante, Baya, Belianosa, Abu, Abuek Zaltivar, Abunda, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advincula, Agabas, Agarao, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Senaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amantematba, Amatong, Andaya, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atsienza, Mentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banyas Nograles, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Vazco, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Piason, Biliones, Piron, Bolilla, Pondok, Portado, Bravo, Rosas, Bulot, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabotchan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderon, Calixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Harry, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredil, Cayetano Alan Peter Compañero, Cayetano Mariano Arni, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Chungalau, Co Angelica, Co Elizaldi, Kawanko, Coliantes, Crisologo, Cuah, Juarezma, Cueva, Coliamat, Tagook, Dalipe, Dalok, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Delmar, De Los Santos, De Los Montalia, Demaporo Abdullah, Demaporo Muhammad Khalid, Duavit, Du Hali, Duterte, D Faustino Ino, D Faustino Michael III, D Ian Paul, Epcas, Ecleyo, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Ergel, Ermita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrelia, Pariñez Ria, Pariñez Rudy Caesar, Fernandez, Fernando, Per Juliet, Per Luis, Flores, Pongwan, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco, Puente Belia, Caite, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Karin Janet, Karin Sharon, Casataya, Kat Chalyan, Gato, Heron, Go Ed, Go Mark, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Carlo, Correceta, Gico, Gulyas, Guya, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Alusjos, Javier, Jimenez, Co Elisa, Co Wilton, Kong Hun, Labad Labad, Laxson, Laxson Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lazatin, Lia Chon, Legarda, Lim, Lim Kay Chong, Lopez, Riola, Losotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Magundadato, Marc Coleta, Mariano Hernandez, Marinho, Marquez, Martinez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Momo, Atividad Naganyo, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerko, Nograles Juan Fidel, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyaon, Uaminal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Ronnie, Ortega, Uano Disson, Pakya Alberto, Pakya Roelio, Padgiernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Chai, Clementel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Rodaza, Ramirezato, Ramos, Remulia, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Yedamarí, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Takaluran, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Sanchez, Sangkopan, San Frekto, Sarmento, Saulug, Sabelliano, Chau, Silberio, Singson, Singson Mihan, Sin Suat, Suatsing Estrelita, Suansing Horacio, Suarez Aleta, Suarez David, Sun Tay, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tambunting, Tan Alisa, Tan Angelina, Tan Shamir, Tan Sharie, Tan Tambut, Teada, Teves Arnulfo, Teves Jose, Chango, Tolentino, Torres Gomez, Tulfo, Tupas, Titor, Si Alan, Si Diego, Umali Alfonso, Umali Maria Victoria, Unavia, Ungab, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Vergara, Villa, Villa Fuerte, Villanueva Brother Eddie, Villanueva Noel, Villar, Villarasa Suarez, Villa Rica, Yolago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Way Corat, Zarate Zubiri.
Mr. Speaker, the roll call shows that 221 members responded to the call.
With 221 members responding to the call, the chair declares the presence of a call. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve Journal Number 29 and dated November 20, 2019. So move.
Any objection? The chair is here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the guests of Honorable Angelica Natasha Ko, PHW party list, 50 barangay health workers from Quezon Province.
The guest of Congressman Ko is hereby recognized. Please rise and welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the guest of Attorney Congressman Edgar Chato from the First District of Bohol, Mr. Coro Serafim, delegation from the province of Bohol to the National Music Competition for Young Artists 2019, headed by their conductor, Ms. Marie Aleli Inting, the musical director, Emmanuel de la Rosa. So move.
The guest of Congressman Chato is recognized. Please rise and welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the change of referral of the following measures. House Bill Number 2950, declaring January 18 of every year a special non-working holiday for all kasambahay in the entire country to be known as the Araw ng Kasambahay, from the Committee on Labor and Employment to the Committee on Revision of Laws. House Bill Number 3451, authorizing the grant of a full-credit insurance coverage to qualified beneficiaries of the Comprehensive Agrarian Reform Program, from the Committee on Agriculture and Food to the Committee on Agrarian Reform. House Bill Number 3735, providing stronger protection for children against sexual abuse, from the Committee on Welfare of Children to the Committees on Revision of Laws and Welfare of Children. Number four, House Bill Number 2972, amending Articles Number 99, 121, and 122 of the Presidential Decree Number 442, otherwise known as the Labor Code of the Philippines, from the Committee on Labor and Employment to the Committees on Labor, Employment, and Civil Service and Professional Regulation. Number five, House Bill Numbers 652, 663, 1031, 2535, 2738, 2785, and 4558, providing for a comprehensive providing for a comprehensive nuclear regulatory framework creating for the purpose the Philippine Nuclear Regulatory Commission from the Committees on Governmental Organization and Science and Technology to the Committees on Governmental Organization, Science and Technology, and Energy; Number 6, House Bill Number 4267, creating the Philippine Nuclear Regulatory and Research Commission from the Committee on Energy to the Committees on Governmental Organization, Science and Technology, and Energy; House Bill, lastly, House Bill Number 5570, augmenting the employee benefits for the solicitors of the Office of the Solicitor General by providing retirement, death, and survivorship benefits from the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation to the Committee on Justice. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the guests of Honorable Ferdinand Martin, I'm sorry, the guest of Congressman Luis Raymond El Rey Villia Fuerte, the second, from the Second District of Camarinesur, our Deputy Speaker. They are Counselor George Bengua, Counselor Edsel Di Maewak, Counselor Christian Echipare, Counselor Aleho Francis Caison, Counselor Alex Camacho, Counselor Donna Ann Roy Onyate, Counselor Marlin Raymundo, Counselor Christopher Hasinto, Counselor Jonas Soltes, Counselor Alexander Mendoza, Counselor Ruwelt Troy Espiritu, Counselor Roy Credo, Counselor Rodolfo Ruwelt Jimenez, Counselor Jose San Buenaventura Junior, Counselor Jerry Mar Attienza, and punong barangay, Vilmar Panyelos. So move, Mr. Speaker.
The guest of Honorable El Rey Villia Fuerte is hereby recognized. Please rise and welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we resume consideration of House Bill Number 78 under Committee Report Number 5 and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure. So move, Mr. Speaker.
The Secretary General is so directed.
House Bill Number 78, an act providing for the definition of public utility further amending for the purpose, Commonwealth Act Number 146, otherwise known as the Public Service Act as amended.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, to continue with the interpolation, may I acknowledge the sponsor, the Honorable Sharon Garin, and to interpolate, to continue with the interpolation, may I move that we recognize the Honorable JJ Suarez. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved. The Honorable Garin is recognized for the sponsorship, and likewise, the Honorable Suarez is recognized for his interpolation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, to continue. Prior to the calling of the roll, we were talking about agencies and regulating offices. May I ask, Mr. Speaker, will there be a need to create new agencies or new regulations for these foreign-owned companies upon passage of this law?
Mr. Speaker, for the agencies, there is no need to create new agencies. Maybe there is a need to strengthen or to to review their powers and functions, but as far as I see, there is no need to create new agencies, Mr. Speaker.
Because if the position of the good sponsor, Mr. Speaker, is that we need to strengthen these agencies and these regulating bodies, shouldn't we first strengthen them? Shouldn't we first empower them prior to the enactment of that said law? It would be the most prudent course of action, Mr. Speaker.
Sir Speaker, I understand the concern of a good interpolator, but like any other bill that we are tackling for the improvement of the economy of the Philippines, one law should not hinder the passage of another. It should be simultaneous. In fact, if we could all pass it all together at the same time, then that would be most ideal, but considering even just the deliberation of this bill takes two months, I don't think we can pass all of them together, but it should be, the effort should be lodged with the legislative so that we can have a more synchronized and more organized direction towards the improvement of the economy of the Philippines, but I do disagree though, Mr. Speaker, that we should hold one law for the passage of another because all of this will all still, whether the passage or not of the other one, will still be for the benefit of the Filipino people. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
The reason why I emphasize this point, Mr. Speaker, is we're dealing with a matter very serious, which is public service, which is public interest, and of course, national security. Kasi lang sa batas pong isinusulong na ito, palagay ko po mahal na tagapungulo, marapat lamang na siguraduhin natin na maahensya ang mga regulating bodies are properly equipped and as the good sponsor mentioned, strengthened to ensure that we are prepared for any eventuality once this bill is approved and implemented, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, yes, the concern of the good interpolators is very valid and it is very possible, but, Mr. Speaker, we, the agencies, I do believe if they do perform their functions and mandate properly, then the interest of the Filipino people as well as the interest or the interest of national security will be well protected. In addition to that, we have the National Security Council, we have the Privacy Act, we have the PCC, anti-competition. We have many other agencies that are in general also watching over the national security and interest of the country, but so hence, Mr. Speaker, I do believe there is, there is, it is not a valid reason for the amendment of the PSA because we do have things in place already. It's just a matter of implementation as well, or strong implementation of their mandate.
If so, Mr. Speaker, can I ask the good sponsor, has our Secretary of National Defense, has our Department of National Defense and National Security Advisor given any comments, opinions to the said bill?
Mr. Speaker, considering that this bill was the passage, the amendment of the Public Service Act, which was enacted about 80 years ago, amendment of the PSA is a priority bill mentioned by the President. During the Sona, it was no less than the President mentioned it in the Sona just recently. In fact, Secretary Pernia also mentioned it, the head of NEDA as well as the Secretary of Finance, Secretary Dominguez. This is an administration bill, and like any administration bill, it is assumed that the administration has done their own research, their own consultation, and all of the agencies are in support of the passage of the proposed amendment, Mr. Speaker.
So is it right for me to understand, Mr. Speaker, that the Department of National Defense and our National Security Advisor supports this said measure? Hundred percent?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Do we have any letter of recommendation or any document that would support such statement, Madam Sponsor?
No, Mr. Speaker, but with the communication from the the Department of Finance as well as NEDA and all the other economic managers of the country, as well as no less than the President, that is sufficient enough for, because it is an administration bill, Mr. Speaker.
So therefore, it's not, it's only right for us to ask, Mr. Speaker, if the good sponsor is confident about her statements regarding this issue, can we ask the Department of the National Defense and our National Security Advisor to come up with a document fully supporting the Public Service Act?
Should the good interpolator wishes to do so, then the committee can request from the Department, Mr. Speaker.
Kasi ilagay po natin, Mr. Speaker, ang sitwasyon. Ngayon meron pong isinusulong na national broadband ang DICT. Assuming country X wins the bid and operates this national broadband, knowing for a fact all the, all the national agencies are connected to this broadband, the army, the marines, the navy, everybody, all the agencies, the palace, everybody connected to this national broadband. Isn't that, does not that give a level of concern and threat to our national security?
Mr. Speaker, we should not equate a threat to national, the increasing competition investment of foreign investors as a threat to national security. There are good investors and there are good, bad investors. Same way as there are good and bad foreign investors. But, Mr. Speaker, that is why we have, we have safeguards in place already in terms of foreign investments, whether it be the takeover power of the President, the power under the Section 17 of the 1987 Constitution, also the National Security Council under Administrative Code 19 of 1987, and national privacy competition, and many more. In fact, also the PCC. But we also have, again, in addition, the proponents of this bill have also proposed to include a national security clause in which the President can intervene, so we understand the many concerns of the many colleagues as well. Hence, we have addressed the issue by adding the clause on national security concerns, Mr. Speaker.
So I touch, Mr. Speaker, on the issue of transportation, a little bit on telecommunications. Does the proposed bill also cover port services, Mr. Speaker?
Port services?
Port services.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, the port services will be public services, not public utilities, hence open for foreign investments at 100%.
What about transportation?
Also, Mr. Speaker, they are not public utilities, they are public services.
What about public markets?
The same, Mr. Speaker.
So all of these can be owned by a foreign company following the consequence of this said bill?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, but they will still be subject to the regulation of the administrative agencies that are that are responsible, are mandated to oversee the industry, Mr. Speaker.
May I ask, Mr. Speaker, what were the reasons in declassifying these services from public utilities?
Mr. Speaker, the there is a set definition which I mentioned earlier, and in the definition, all these agencies or all these industries do not fall under the definition of public utilities. Only the electricity as well as the water and sewage would fall under the public public utility, but hence they will be open to foreign ownership, but by classifying it as, not as a public utility, it will basically be classifying these industries welcoming foreign investors into industries. Now, yes, this will be a threat to our local investors, but all these industries, basically transportation, for example, we have one of the most expensive in sea transport. Our agriculture products, when you transport them from one island to another, 50% of the cost of our agriculture products is transportation. In terms of land transportation, the traffic in Edsa is is enough evidence of how poor our land transportation is. The line going to LRT, MRT, and all this rail transport is proof enough that we have one of the worst services fitting for Filipinos. Telecommunications, we have still have the most expensive and the slowest. In fact, our broadband is the slowest in the region. In Indonesia, Mr. Speaker, there are about 200 consumers, 200 in population, but they have about 30 operators in telecommunications. When the airline industry, we only have Philippine Airlines, it was expensive and very delayed. Now came Tiger Air, came Civil Pacific, Air Asia. Now the rates and the services are better. Competition is good, maybe not for our local investors, but it is good for each and every Filipino. If we want better services for the Filipinos, then we need to open our industries to foreign investment. It is not to replace, is it not to replace the domestic investors? Because our domestic investors are very capable, but it is lacking. We need foreign investors to supplement what is needed to improve the basic services to every, each and every Filipino. Kung gusto nating mag-improve ang telecommunications, faster internet, better, better land transport, better rail transport, and better sea transport, then we need foreign investors because we are lacking in this investment. It is not because we it is not because we want to replace domestic investors. It is because we need more and with such, we are helping our kababayan, the Filipino people who are suffering every day with the poor services and very expensive service that they have today because there is lack of investment in the Philippines, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, wasn't that the same promise that we heard when we deregulated oil industry? When we allowed more players to participate in petroleum with the entry of Caltechs and Shell and Petron and all these? We were all promised that once deregulated, we can be assured of better services, cheaper prices. Do we see that now, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, we can cite many examples. I can also cite an example of telecommunications wherein when we only had PLDT, the service was very expensive and very poor. Now came Globe and Smart, but then we have Sun which competed with the big, the giants of telecommunications and offered unlimited calls and unlimited texts, and then the service and the prices decreased. So that is also a success story in terms of competition. Competition in the same way as airline industry, competition did well for our common, for the common Filipino. So, Mr. Speaker, there are examples, there are bad stories, there are good stories, but this is what our administration, our economic managers, as well as the President is betting on that this will improve the services for every Filipino, Mr. Speaker.
So am I correct to say, Mr. Speaker, that what the sponsor, what the good sponsor is saying, that if passed, the Filipinos can finally have utopia? Where we can have better services, where we are insured of efficiency, where we are insured of better services for all Filipinos? Am I correct to understand, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, the Public Service Act or the amendment to the Public Service Act is not the end-all and be-all of the problems of the Philippines. We still have to reform our taxes, our taxation, we still have to strengthen, for example, all the administrative agencies, we still have to make reforms in many departments that we have as well as legislations and regulations that we have. This is one of the variables. This is one of the variables that have been seen by our economic managers that will help alleviate the Filipino lives, as well as reach the target growth of the Philippines by the end of the year or the following years, Mr. Speaker.
So therefore, no? Is that correct, Mrs. Sponsor, Madam Sponsor?
I would not say that it is not...
Categorically no?
It will not... it will not improve, but it will be one of the variables. Because this is a synchronized amendment of all the other laws that we have at present. Without one or without the other, then it might not be as effective. But we have seen that with the changes in many of these laws, then it is possible that we will reach a certain level of improvement that will be happily acceptable for all Filipinos, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sponsor. Earlier today, while reading the papers, I came across an article that interviewed Mr. Nestor Tan, 2019 MAP Management Man of the Year. He was talking a lot about international principles in economics. And he mentioned, maybe it is time for us to revisit how we see the markets and how we see economy. Maybe what works for developed nations may not work for developing nations. He mentioned the case of Korea. The Korean model, quote-unquote, they nurture national champions, champions in different industries, so that they can compete regionally and globally. What I'm trying to say, Mr. Speaker, is maybe this is another way for us to revisit how we can further improve services in our country. Not looking for foreign assistance, not looking for foreign partners. Why not focus on strengthening, providing more impetus, raising up our champions so that they do not only meet the demands of the Filipino today, but they can also compete regionally and globally? Isn't that approach more nationalistic and more patriotic, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, what might work in Korea might not work in Philippines. Same way that... or in any other country. It will be a case-to-case basis. But I would defer to the expertise of our economic managers, whether the different departments that are involved here and then that have researched and studied the situation in the Philippines more closely than any other economist from any other country. So, Mr. Speaker, I do believe... I do... I would trust our economic managers in the decision-making in terms of how the certain laws... amendment on certain laws would benefit the Filipino people. Hence, this for... hence, we currently have a package of different laws that we have to amend in order to address the situation in the Philippines, not in any other country, Mr. Speaker.
But would the good sponsor agree with me? That isn't that a better arrangement for the Philippines?
Mr. Speaker, I...
Strengthening Filipinos, empowering Filipinos, lifting up Filipinos, making Filipinos globally competitive. Isn't that the beauty of being a Filipino?
Mr. Speaker, we are globally competitive. We are very capable. And I do trust that the Filipinos are... some Filipinos are even more capable. In fact, we send many professionals or even investors in other countries. There is no question as to our ability currently. But bringing in competition from foreign investors does not mean that we are not patriotic or we do not believe in ability of the Filipinos. Currently, if we are very practical about it, we need to protect the Filipino people in terms of giving them the basic services. But if we are not able to do so, if the government is unable to do so, then we need to find ways in order for us to better protect the Filipinos and watch the best ways to find foreign investors, but still subject them to the laws and regulations of the Philippines, Mr. Speaker.
The reason I mention that, Mr. Speaker, is one positive consequence of the Korean model that Nestor Tan mentioned in the article that I read. We can be assured that, yes, income will be generated by providing these public services. Yes, money will be derived from providing these services to the Filipinos. And better yet, Mr. Speaker, "Yung perang kikitain nila, iikot dito sa ating bansa, at hindi nila dadalhin sa ibang bansa, kung saan located 'yung kompanya na nagpapatakbo ng transportasyon, na nagpapatakbo ng airline, na nagpapatakbo ng bus, ng tricycle, nagpapatakbo ng jeepney, na kung itong batas, ay atin pong ipatutupad." Yung po ang kagandahan, Mr. Speaker, ng aking iminomungkahe sa ating ginagalang na sponsor. If we allow foreign nationals to own utilities here other than the threat to national security, we can be assured that the money that they will generate will be brought back to their motherland and benefited by not Filipinos, but their host country. What would be the comments of the good sponsor?
Sir Speaker, equally, I admire the nationalistic view of the good interpreter. But also, it is also nationalistic to view that currently, today, we need to improve the basic services for our fellow Filipinos. And it is, I think, unnationalistic. If we let them suffer in the long lines and just getting into a train or going from work from Makati to Commonwealth for two hours, it is... we need to address these problems. And one of these variables that have been found by our administration is to open it up to foreign investors. It is not because we belittle the abilities of the Filipinos, but we need foreign investments in order to improve the services because we need more players in these industries, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. And I do also admire the love that our good sponsor has for the welfare of our Filipinos. Another point, Mr. Speaker, I would like to raise is regarding the bill. May oras pa ba ako? Kaya pa? Continue. Mr. Speaker, with regards to public service and public utility, can there be a reciprocity clause?
If, Mr. Speaker, should the good interpreter has any recommendation on reciprocity, then we would gladly consider, Mr. Speaker.
Meaning, when I say reciprocity?
Reciprocity.
Reciprocity. Is if country A will run and manage our telecom, Filipinos should not be hindered, should not be stopped from running that country's telecommunications as well. If that country wants to run and operate our ports, Filipinos should also have the freedom to run their ports. If country Y wants to run our railway system, Filipinos should also be provided the same avenue to run these railway systems in their country. Can that be included in the bill, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, I would... I would even consider the more stringent way that we only allow them to invest here if they allow us there.
Can you repeat that again, Madam Sponsor?
We only allow foreign investors to invest here if they do allow us in their country, Mr. Speaker.
So meaning, there would be reciprocity?
Reciprocity, yes, Mr. Speaker.
100%. So meaning, if China, for example, decides to invest and operate our railways, we can be assured that any Filipino passing the specific guidelines will also operate the railway of that country? If the US? If the US, for example, invests in our telecom, meaning any Filipino can run and operate the telecommunications system of the United States of America? Japan? Would Japan allow the same in their country, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, I would go through it the other way around. The limitations on foreign investments are embedded in our laws as well as their laws. So it is not as easy as somebody investing here and then they will allow there. So what would be more logical is we will only allow, for example, if there is Taiwanese or Malaysian investing in telecommunications in the Philippines, they will only be allowed to invest in the Philippines if a Filipino is allowed to invest in Malaysia.
In any specific industry? In public utilities and services as well?
Or if they do not allow there, then we cannot... we don't allow them to invest.
That is enshrined in the proposed bill?
That is a proposal that we are seriously considering because you have requested it, Mr. Interpreter.
Because I was going through the bill, Madam Sponsor, and I did not see that. Okay, thank you very much, Madam Sponsor. Madam Sponsor, on a final note, I would like to thank you for answering a few of my concerns. But let me just reiterate and go back to a few of my... Sa Tagalog, ang tawag namin dito, agam-agam. Mas maganda siguro na bago natin buksan ang ating bansa, siguraduhin muna natin na nandoon, buhay, malakas, ang mga institusyon na magbabantay sa interes ng Pilipino. Pangalawa. Sana, bago natin buksan ang ating bansa, hayaan muna natin palakasin. Kung may kakayahan naman at naniniwala akong may kakayahan, palakasin ang kakayahan ng Pilipino. Yes, there is a need to improve service. Yes, there is traffic. Yes, there is gridlock. But I don't think that simply opening up, adding competition, and allowing foreign nationals to come in is the solution to improve this. I think there is another way. And maybe that other way can also be looked into. If countries have proven well in that, I don't see any reason why we cannot. My fear is... my fear, and I hope this is wrong, to my colleagues in Congress. Baka naman abusuhin nila ang kahinaan ng ating bansa upang pagkakitaan. Bakit hindi natin muna siguraduhin na malakas at matatag ang Pilipino bago natin tubuksan sa iba? So with that, Mr. Speaker, I would like to thank the good sponsor for allowing me to interpolate and give a few of my ideas on the said measure. Marami salamat.
Marami salamat, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the guests of Honorable Josephine Veronica Lacson Noel. They are the LGBT sector colors de Malabon, headed by their head coordinator, Kagawad Lori Simo. So move.
The guest of Congresswoman Jay Lacson Noel is recognized. Please rise. Welcome to the House of Representatives, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Sara Jane Elago, party list kabataan, for her interpolation. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Congresswoman Elago is recognized for her interpolation.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Will the good sponsor yield to interpolation?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Maraming salamat po. Earlier, Mr. Speaker, the good sponsor mentioned that House Bill 78, being an administration bill, has conducted their own research and series of consultations to support the passage of this bill. May we know, Mr. Speaker, from the good sponsor, what were the sectors or who were consulted in the conduct of researching for this bill?
Mr. Speaker, the amendment to the Public Service Act is part of the report of NEDA on the Philippine Development... Economic Development Report? I'm not sure the definite term, but it is part of their report which has submitted. And this is one of the priorities, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, sino-sino po ang mga nakonsulta pagdating sa pagpapasak nitong House Bill Number 78? Sinabi po ng ating sponsor kanina na ito naman ay merong sinagawa ng mga konsultahan sa buong bansa na nagsasabi na ito nga ay para sa nakabubuting layunin na mas magandang serbisyo para sa ating mga kababayan.
Mr. Speaker, because this is a report from the administration and presuming that they have done their mandate, then I would not question the procedure that they have done because I assume by drafting or crafting the Philippine Development Plan, NEDA is... should consult the proper agencies as well as interest groups in crafting it. And if you... if the question refers to the committee, then all the agencies have been consulted and communicated with and as well as those industries that are concerned, be it in transportation, telecommunications, airline industries. Many of the industries have been informed and many of them also have submitted their position papers, Mr. Speaker.
Ginoon speaker, maari ba tayong humingi ng kopya nitong mga position paper at mga resulta ng mga konsultahan mula sa iba't ibang grupo na may interes sa ating pinag-uusapan ngayong hapon?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, we can submit to the good interpreter the position papers as well as the minutes of the declarations in the TWG as well as the committee hearing, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, tinatanong ko po ito dahil nais maintindihan mabuti ng representasyon ng kabataan, ang layunin at ang malinaw na batayan at ng pagbabagong ito sa ating mga batas na may kinalaman sa public service at pagbibigay ng kahulugan sa public utility. May we know, Mr. Speaker, from the good sponsor, how does House Bill 78 define a public utility?
Sir Speaker, the public utility first and foremost is that it is a public service. Now, for a public service to become a public utility, we have set the parameters in which we have set the definition in the proposed bill. All of these four has to be met. Not only one, but all of these four have to be met in order for a certain industry to become a public utility. Number one, it has to be regularly supplied, transmitted, and distributes to the public through a network, a commodity or service of public consequence, a regular use supply. And there should be a network. The public service is a natural monopoly. And a natural monopoly exists when the market demand for a commodity or service can be supplied by a single entity at a lower... at a lower cost than by two or more entities. That's how we define natural monopoly. Number three, a commodity or service necessary for the maintenance of life and occupation of the public. And number four would be the person is obligated to provide adequate service to the public on demand. Hindi lang yung kung kailan niya lang gusto, but it has to be delivered all the time, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, and this proposed definition limits the number of public utilities to only four by enumeration under House Bill 78, namely, the distribution of electricity, transmission of electricity, water pipeline distribution system, or sewage pipeline system.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
So it's three?
Yes.
Public utilities.
Yes, it's water pipeline and sewage. So that's why some say it's four.
Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker. Yung bagong kahulugan na ito, it significantly narrows the definition of public utilities to only cover the distribution of the said services, of the said public services. Now, Mr. Speaker, sa palagay po at sa pag-aaral ng representasyon na ito mula sa Kabataan, ito po ay napakalayo doon sa dating napakaraming mga serbisyo na dating kinukonsidera din natin bilang mga public utilities. At nang sa gayon ay meron ding istrikto na regulasyon pagdating sa presyo ng serbisyo o kung paano ba natin tinitiyak 'yung kalidad ng mga partikular na mga serbisyong ito. Mr. Speaker, may we know from the distinguished sponsor the services which were previously included as public utilities but are now not considered as a public utility under House Bill 78?
Mr. Speaker, the Public Service Act does not define what is a public utility. In fact, it does not list down what are the industries that are public utilities. It merely lists down the industries that are public services. Wala pong definition ang public utility under the Public Service Act. In the public service, the Commonwealth Act Number 146 enumerates common carrier, railroad, street railway, traction railway, steamboat, steamships, transportation, shipyards, marine railway, those are public services. It does not state that these are public utilities. What has been happening is that whenever there is a question as to what is public utility, such industry will go to court and then the court will rule upon it whether it's a public utility or not. So, but there has never been a defined list of what is a public utility, Mr. Speaker.
Ngunit, Mr. Speaker, napakahalaga sa atin nung mga industriya, mga serbisyo na nakapailalim bilang mga public utilities dahil nga merong mga requirements pagdating sa pagmamayari nito at gayon din 'yung paghigpit natin sa regulasyon ng mga serbisyong ito. Nais nating malaman, Mr. Speaker, itong House Bill 78, pinapayagan nito ang isang daang procentong pagmamayari at kontrol ng mga dayuhan, halimbawa sa transportasyon, sa komunikasyon, sa broadcasting. Ito po ba ang magiging epekto?
Broadcasting is limited under the Constitution, so that will not be affected. But yes, transportation and telecommunications will be open to hundred percent ownership of foreigners, Mr. Speaker.
Kung gayon, ginoong speaker, papayagan din nito ang mga dayuhang kumpanya na meron na ngayong isang daang procentong pagmamayari at kontrol sa naturang mga negosyo na makipagkompetensya doon naman sa negosyo ng mga Pilipino, sa naturang mga negosyo?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Nababahala tayo, Mr. Speaker, na ito ay, sa madaling salita, 'yung pangarap na maipasan ng provision sa marami ng mga efforts at marami na ring mga tangka na baguhin ang naturang provision pagdating sa pagmamayari ng mga serbisyong mahalaga sa taong bayan na nakasaad sa ating konstitusyon. Ito po ay kaiba at labag doon sa tinatadhana mismo ng ating konstitusyon pagdating sa pagmamayari ng mga naturang public utilities. Dahil tinatadhana ng ating konstitusyon na malimitahan ang pagoperate ng mga ito doon lamang sa ating mga Filipino citizens o kaya naman mga pribadong kumpanya na sixty percent anim na pong bahagdan na pagmamayari ng mga Pilipino. Tinatadhana rin na ang karapatan o kontrata ng mga public utilities na ito ay maaring baguhin ang kongreso kung kinakailangan. Sang-ayon pa rin, ginoong speaker, sa interes ng publiko o kung nakasaad sa ating konstitusyon sa common good. Tinatadhana rin na ang partisipasyon ng mga dayuhang investors ay ayon lamang sa kanilang capital share na hindi lalagpas sa forty percent. Gayon din, ang pamamahala sa isang public utility ay para lamang sa mga Filipino citizens. The provision states, Mr. Speaker, that no franchise, certificate, or any other form of authorization for the operation of a public utility shall be granted except to citizens of the Philippines or the corporations or associations organized under the laws of the Philippines, at least sixty percent of whose capital is owned by such citizens. Nor shall such franchise, certificate, or authorization be exclusive in character or for a longer period than fifty years. Neither shall any such franchise or right be granted except under the condition that it shall be subject to amendment, alteration, or repeal by the Congress when the common good so requires. The state shall encourage equity participation in public utilities by the general public. The participation of foreign investors in the governing body of any public utility enterprise shall be limited to their proportionate share in its capital. And all the executive and managing officers of such corporation or association must be citizens of the Philippines. Ang sa atin lang po dito, lahat tayo nagkakaisa na nais natin ng mas magandang serbisyo, mas mababang presyo ng mga serbisyo na kinakailangan ng taong bayan sa pang-araw-araw na buhay na kinakailangan para sa mga negosyo na yumabong. Ngunit, kinakailangan din natin protektahan pagdating sa kung sino ba ang makikinabang, sino ba ang kikita, at sa kalaunan, sino ba ang yayabong ang kabuhayan at ang buhay pagdating sa mga pinapasan nating mga batas. And now, Mr. Speaker, hayaan niyo po kung malaman naman o ang naging pag-aaral, ang pananaliksik ng ating good sponsor at ng lahat po ng proponents ng bill na ito pagdating sa sinasabi na ang House Bill 78 o ang paglilimita ng bilang ng mga public utilities at pagbubukas nito sa isang daang procento na pagmamayari at kontrol ng mga dayuhan ay magbubunsod ng mas maraming pagpipilian, mas mabuting serbisyo, at mas mababang mga presyo. Ano po ang mga naging batayan ng mga pangakong ito na magiging bunga rawho ng pagpasa ng House Bill 78 at pagpapapasok pa ng dayuhang kapital sa ating bansa?
Sir Speaker, the Section 11 of the Constitution addresses public utility. Unfortunately, over the years, there are some cases that the terms have been interchanged, public service, public utility. And the list of, or the assumed public utilities have been changed over the years. In fact, under EPIRA, Power Generation, which used to be public utility, has been, by legislature, changed to be not a public utility anymore. Under the ruling of JG Summit, the SE upheld a removal of shipyards from the ambit of public utility. Also, in the NPC versus Provincial Government of Kabataan, Power Generation is no longer considered public utility. There has been many inconsistencies in terms of the list, in terms of definition, no. Pero, if you go back to the Constitutional Commission and in fact, the luminaries of the Constitution, Bernas even said that there is no intention to protect Filipino industries from foreign competition at the expense of consumers. What we are trying to do here is protect the consumers, protect the Filipino people. Hindi po to, we are undermining or underestimating the ability of domestic investors. It is our need to protect our consumers, be they passengers of transportation industries or users of our telecommunications. It is our way of protecting the Filipino people. Kaya, going back to the earlier statement of the good interpolator on are we trying to violate the sanctity of our constitution? I would like to disagree on that because the constitution and/or the framers of the constitutions were in fact not definite on how public utility would be defined. Over the years, the Supreme Court has interchanged the public services with public utility and in fact, added or subtracted industries from the definition of public utility. It has not been consistent in that sense. So, it is by the right or the mandate of the legislative to enact a law to clarify such ambiguity. Kaya po, this is not a violation. We are not saying that public utility is not anymore covered under the sixty forty limitation. What we are merely doing here is define what is public utility and should that industry fall under that definition, that it is a public utility. But all public utilities will still stay under the limitations of the constitution and the sixty forty limitation of foreign ownership as well as they will be still under the authority and regulation of the administrative agencies, be it by DNR, DTR, DOST, or CAAP, or LTFRB. That will still be in place, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, ang tayo po ay sumasang-ayon na kailangan ngang maglinaw mihingil sa kung ano ba ang public utilities para malinaw din sa atin kung ano ang ating protektahan na mga serbisyo na may kinalaman hindi lamang sa pang-araw-araw na mga kinakailangan na serbisyo ng ating mga kababayan kundi maging iyong mga sektor na may kinalaman sa ating pambansang seguridad at gayon din sa soberania ng ating bansa. Kaya nga ho, tinatanong natin sa ating Mr. Speaker, sa ating good sponsor, Mr. Speaker, kung ano po 'yung mga naging batayan ng kanilang mga sinabi dito sa kanilang explanatory note na magbubunsod, magbubunga ang pagpapapasok ng isang daang procentong na pinagmamayarian at kinokontrol ng mga dayuhan, lalong-lalo na po sa transportasyon at sa komunikasyon pagdating sa mas maraming pagpipilian, mas mabuting serbisyo, at mas mababang presyo. Halimbawa po, pagdating sa serbisyo ng internet, lahat po tayo naglalayon na magkaroon ng mabilis, maaasahan, may security na serbisyo na internet. Ngunit, ang nais po natin malaman, pagdating hindi lang sa internet kundi pagdating sa transportasyon at lahat ng serbisyo ng komunikasyon, paano po natin nasabi na ang sagot dun sa ating sinasabing problema na kontrolado lamang ng iilan ang negosyo sa transportasyon at sa komunikasyon? Kaya, mataas ang presyo, mababa ang kalidad ng serbisyo, ang sagot ay ang pagpapasok o ang pagpapapasok ng mga dayuhang mamumuhunan na may isang daang procento na kontrol at pagmamayari sa mga mahahalagang sektor na ito. Ang ayaw po natin dito, Mr. Speaker, tayo po ay magpapasa ng batas na naglalaman ang mga misleading na mga promises. Kaya, itong mga sinabi na ito na mga magagandang maidudulot di umano ng batas, kailangan nating malinaw kung anong naging batayan sa pagsasabi na muli, ito ay magbubunsod ng mas maraming pagpipilian? Yes, pero ito ba ay magbubunsod talaga ng mas magandang serbisyo at mas mababang presyo?
Sir Speaker, we have, when the Constitution states, Article 12, Section 1 of the Constitution states that the state shall protect Filipino enterprises against unfair foreign competition and trade practices. We are protected from, we are not eliminating the possibility of foreign investors. We are protecting Filipinos from unfair foreign investors. It does not do away with foreign investments in the Philippines, Mr. Speaker. Now, why is the assumption, as stated by the good interpolator, that the influx of foreign investors would improve services? For example, Mr. Speaker, what we have seen is added competition improves basic services. We have seen that locally with telecommunications in terms of the price, nung pumasok 'yung sun, nag-adjust din ng service and rates 'yung ibang companies. When the new players in the air industry came in, then it improved the rates and services of the Philippine Airlines as well. In other countries, the same has been like in New Zealand as well. I just need to find the data on this. But other countries have also practiced this and it has improved. In fact, well based, for example, based on telecommunications, for example. In telecommunications, Philippines is the worst in the region. We are at forty percent in terms of foreign equity. Indonesia, which is within the area, allows sixty percent ownership. There's an average of fifty-seven percent ownership of foreign ownership. And Malaysia allows a hundred percent. Singapore allows one hundred percent. Thailand allows forty-nine percent, in fact. Not allows, it's an average that they have. There's an average of fifty-three percent in Taiwan, no, sixty percent in Taiwan, and fifty-three percent in Vietnam. And compared Philippines compared to all this in the industry of telecommunications, is lagging behind all these countries. One of the observations of our economic managers is that there's healthier competition in these other countries due to the influx of other investors from other countries because it supplements, you know, it adds more capital into the country. Hence, because since telecommunications and transportation are required big investments, foreign investors are welcoming these industries. So, competition is stiffer there and the services improve, Mr. Speaker.
Ginoong speaker, halimbawa po, nais kong magbahagi rin sa ating good sponsor ng karanasan ng representasyon na ito pagdating sa sinasabi na ang mas matindi, ang mas malakas na kompetisyon ay maaring magbunsod ng mas mababang presyo o mas mababang ang halaga ng isang serbisyo. Halimbawa po, sa mga eskwelahan, kung saan ang karapatan sa edukasyon ay nagkaroon na ng presyo sa anyo ng tuition at mga other school fees, imbes po na sa taon-taon na regulasyon ng CHED, ito ay mapapababa. Yung tuition po, hindi po 'yan bumababa sa pagpapapasok o sa pagtatayo ng mas maraming mga eskwelahan. Kundi, sa karanasan po natin at ito ay masusuportahan nung karanasan ng mga dumadalo na iba't ibang sektor pagdating sa mga konsultasyon ng pagtataas ng tuition. ng pagtataas ng tuition at other school fees. Yan po' ang mga estudyante, ang mga non-teaching personnel, ang kanilang mga magulang, ang kanilang faculty. Nagkita po' natin na imbes ito ay mapababa, ang mas nananatili pa rin na main consideration na kung bakit sila magtataas at kung bakit natutuloy 'yung pagtataas mismo ng tuition at other school fees. Malaki pong factor ay dalawa. Unang-una ay 'yung sinasabing necessity ng eskwelahan. Ano ba 'yung mga plano niya para sa expansion? O kaya naman, ano ba 'yung mga plano niya pagdating sa mga improvement ng mga facilities sa loob ng eskwelahan? Pangalawa ho', ay 'yung mismong regulasyon ng Commission on Higher Education. Pagdating sa pagtataas ng tuition at other school fees, ang mga butas po' sa regulasyon niyan ay... Oo, merong konsultasyon pero sinasabing ito ay bogus lamang dahil kahit pa lahat ng mga stakeholders, lahat ng mga sektor na nagpa-participate sa mga konsultasyon ay nagsasabi ng tutol sila sa pagtataas ng tuition dahil ang regulasyon o ang polisiya ay payagan pa rin. Ang pagtataas, basta may konsultasyon, kahit pa lahat ng mga sectors at stakeholders ay tumututol, ay natutuloy pa rin po' 'yung tuition and other school fee increases. Binahagi natin to, Ginoong Speaker, dahil maaring... Ang kailangan naman natin ay hindi 'yung pagpapasok ng mas maraming competisyon o kung maari din pwede magpapasok ng competisyon. Ngunit, kung marami pa ring butas at kahinaan pagdating sa regulasyon at pagtitiyak na 'yung kanilang pinangakong kalidad at 'yung pinangako na mababang presyo, ay hindi naman natin matitiyak sa pamamagitan ng pagpapalakas ng ating mga regulatory bodies, ay wala rin pong visa. Itong nilalayon natin na pagbubukas ng ating ekonomiya ng... Sa isang daang procento na pagmamayari at kontrol sa mga dayuhan. Bagkus pwede pang masamantala itong sitwasyon na ito na mahina ang regulasyon, monitoring sa quality at sa presyo para palubohin pa 'yung kita ng mga dayuhan. Ang nakakabahala po' sa ganito, ang kumikita dayuhan sa sarili nating bansa. Imbes na palakasin natin 'yung ating mga regulatory bodies at tiyakin na 'yung mga kinikita ng mga nagnenegosyo dito sa ating bansa hindi lang na iipon sa kung sino ang may are o kung sino ang may kontrol na mga iilan na mga negosyo. Kundi napapababa natin at pantay na naibabahagi sa mga manggagawa, doon sa kanyang sariling management team at sa lahat ng mga tumutulong para maitaguyod ang ating mga lokal na serbisyo at industriya. Ganoon, sa gayon, Mr. Speaker, nais nating atanungin ang ating sponsor. Sinabi rin sa House 78 na magkakaroon ho' na mekanismo sa pagtatalaga ng rates para naman iyong mga sisingilin sa mga naturang public services na hindi na ngayon ang public utilities o 'yung mga dating itinuturing natin na public utilities na may mahigpit na requirements pagdating sa pagmamayari. Ay, maiiwasan naman natin 'yung profiteering mula dun sa much-needed na mga serbisyo ng ating mga kababayan, lalong-lalo na sa transportasyon at sa komunikasyon. Maari po ba nating malaman kung ano 'yung sa tingin ng ating good sponsor ang pinakamainang na rate-setting methodology para matiyak natin na magiging rasonable itong mga sisingilin ng mga magnenegosyo na dayuhan dito sa ating bansa?
Mr. Speaker, addressing the previous statements of the Good Interpretaor, an example of the effect of liberalization, for example, would be... For example, in Myanmar, when they opened their... When they liberalized telecommunications, this before, a SIM card cost $300 in 2012 and now it's $1.50. Mobile penetration increased from 7% to 100% by 2018. Internet penetration increased from 26... No, from 0.3% in 2010 to 26%. The increase in competition in Myanmar telecommunications resulted in falling data prices and lowering of average revenue per user. Dito po' sa Pilipinas, if we speak about telecommunications, the study of our economic managers as well as together with the World Bank and all the other economic scholars that we have, a 10% increase in broadband penetration leads to 1.38 increase in GDP. This translates to 14.4 billion pesos contributed to GDP. Kung ma-increase natin to 10% lang, 10% lang na dagdag. On the other hand, on shipping, if we open shipping to foreign investors, it is estimated that there will be 18 million in private sector investments. I expect po' nito that the freight rates will likely fall by 20% and will increase the demand by 1.1 million additional metric tons. Entry of foreign investors, increase in competition will not only benefit the foreign investors. Kikita sila, of course, but kikita rin 'yung Pilipino. The GDP will increase. That will trickle down to each and every Filipino na nangangailangan talaga ng tulong on our basic services. Now, I do not... I do not want to say na this is the end-all, end-all solution of what our fellow Filipinos are going through on the basic services. But this is one way of improving the basic services. Kaya po', it is my... As I stated earlier, our economic teams in the administration have done their consultations and their studies and this is how they derive the... They have included Amendment to the Public Service Act as one of the factors that will benefit our economy as well as each and every Filipino. Well, in fact, if you look at it from the education sector, no, we won't be able to probably improve the tuition. But with the onset of better telecommunications, better broadband, mas maayos na 'yung access of our students in information that are right now not accessible to them because of the limitations of our telecommunications industries. Makakatulong po' ito sa... Hindi lang po' pang Facebook o pang... But it will help them in accessing data that are essential to improve the quality of education among our teachers as well as among our students. With the last question of the Good Interpretaor, the fixing of rates. We have addressed the fixing of rates in the proposal. But we have followed actually the rulings in the Meralco case, which states that the only standard which the legislature is required to prescribe for the guidance of the administrative authority is that the rate be reasonable and just. It has been held that even in the absence of an express requirement as to reasonableness, this standard may be implied. What is just and reasonable rate is a question of fact calling for the extension of discretion, good sense and a fair, enlightened and independent judgment. So following that, we have introduced... If with the indulgence of the Good Interpretaor, I can read the proposed amendment. The public... On rate setting, the additional provision is that when the public interest requires, the administrative agency may establish and enforce a methodology for setting rates taking into account all the relevant considerations, including the efficiency of the regulated public service. The rates must be such as to allow the recovery of prudent and efficient costs and a reasonable rate of return to enable the public service to operate viably and efficiently. The administrative agency may adopt alternative forms consistent with internationally accepted rate-setting methodology. The adapted rate-setting methodology shall ensure a reasonable price of the commodity or service and that the rates prescribed shall not be discriminatory. The provision shall not be interpreted as mandating rate regulations nor amending or repealing laws providing for a deregulation policy. And it goes on and on. So it is just a guidance na dapat may standards tayo and it has to be reasonable and it has to be prudent and efficient costs, Mr. Speaker.
Ginoong Speaker, mahingi po' tayo sa ating mabuting sponsor ng kopya ng kanyang binasa na magiging pagbabago sa bill na ito. Bagamat meron po' tayong gagamitin na rasonable na methodology pagdating sa rate setting, ang kinababahala lang po' natin dito ay ni-re-reinforce po' natin 'yung paggamit sa profitability na bilang kondisyon sa pag-ooffer ng public service na mga basic necessities, very basic necessities para sa taong bayan. Imbes na profitability, ang masinahanap natin 'yung sustainability ng offering ng mga serbisyo ito. At mahirap pong hanapin 'yung ganong tipo ng layunin at ng objective kung ang interes na nung dayuhang papasok dito sa ating bansa. Hindi naman talaga pabutihin 'yung buhay na bawat isa sa atin. Kundi ang pangunahin pa rin 'yung magiging layunin ay ang kumita. So 'yung ganoon lang po' na napagtingin, napagdating sa pag-ooffer ng isang public service na kailangan matiyak muna na profitable 'yung isang venture para ka tumuloy sa pagpasok sa ibang bansa. Ah, gayon din, Mr. Speaker, atayo po' ay... Maraming katanungan pagdating dun sa maaring mga panganib ng...
Mr. Speaker, just to address the rate setting, I'm... Thank you for addressing the topic, the Good Interpretaor, because what we have tried to do is not override what is the power of the administrative agency. Kasi sila po' 'yung nagrate-setting, like for example ERC. Sila po' 'yung nagse-set 'yan. But the guideline is that it has to be reasonable, the cost should be prudent and efficient cost. Those are economic terms that we have adopted. Kasi 'yun pa talaga 'yung mga guidelines on the international arena as well as in the common practices of the different industries. We did not go into specifics because each industry has their own rate-setting policies. In fact, ang objective, just to emphasize the objective of this amendments, that the rate setting... The rate setting, the impact should be that it should be a performance-based rate regulation such that the company have performance standards that they may have to comply with for the price they charge. Ang objective po' na, yes, the investors will profit but not more than the competitive profit. This should be a win-win for Filipino consumers kasi magbe-benefit sila ng lower price and higher quality. Pero we don't want naman a losing company, but we want it very reasonable at 'yung dapat babantayan ang mga regulators natin like ERC or any other regulating administrative agency. Pero, yes, I would like to restate for... Para nasa record po' ng ating debatein, na hindi po' to na that it will be exorbitant or confiscatory na. Ang gusto natin po' reasonable lang, that it will be... That only prudent costs, reasonable prudent costs will only be included in the rate-setting methodology that would be applied by the administrative agency. This is to disallow any excessive or exorbitant fees that would be charged by the industry, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
Mr. Speaker, at present, do we have an assessment of these rate-setting policies by our regulatory agencies or bodies?
Mr. Speaker, this is a very... This is a very complex system that they have. For example, if an electric company wants to increase their rates, they have to go through many processes, procedures. And ERC would require a hearing for rate setting, actually. And then what they apply there is what is normally applied by the agency. What PSA is doing is that dapat reasonable rates and all the guidelines. Very, very generic ang nilagay dito para lang may guideline na they cannot overcharge or hindi pwede na unreasonable. If ERC actually takes, I don't think it's just months. Iba nga, mga taon-taon na rin 'yan for their hearings to finish, ano? Pero the same way that other agencies have their own system of rate setting, we do not want... It is very complicated to be very specific in PSA kasi we are dealing with different industries here. Hence, we have decided to have a more general statement and leave it up to the administrative agencies to decide. Kaya po', wala po' 'yan sa batas ang specific details of rate setting. Very general statements lang on what are the guidelines, Mr. Speaker.
Pero, Ginoong Speaker, sa ngayon wala po' tayong pag-aaral kung gaano ka-epektibo itong mga ginagamit na rate-setting policy ng ating mga ahensya. Kasi, Ginoong Speaker, kung wala, kung nahihirapan na tayo dito pa lang sa mga local players natin, paano pa pagpumasok 'yung mga mas malalake na mga dayuhang maari nilang kakumpetensya? Kaya po', dito natin makikita kung gaano talaga kinakailangan na palakasin muna natin 'yung sistema ng regulasyon para matiyak itong layon ng ating butihing sponsor na sa mas magandang serbisyo, hindi naman pagkakakitaan 'yung ating taong bayan pagdating sa pagfix ng mga fees na sisingilin sa ibat-ibang negosyo ito.
Mr. Speaker, just because an investor is a foreigner does not mean that they will not be subject to the regulations of ERC or any agency. Pare-pareho na rin 'yan, the same treatment whether you are Filipino or non-Filipino. If you perform a public service, then you will still be subject to all the regulations. Ang difference na siguro, you won't speak Tagalog to them, but they will still be subjected to the same rules and regulations, rate-setting regulations that is required by the administrative agency. Walang difference po' 'yan. So I don't think that this will... The amendment that we are applying or the difficulty of application of different agencies, that will still apply whether they are Filipinos or not. So wala pong danger po' in terms of rate-setting methodology. What we are merely trying to do here is may standards lang tayo na pare-pareho among all industries. But it is... I refer to it being difficult because it is difficult... because it is difficult to harmonize everything in one bill when the industries are all different at numero sila. Kaya mahirap po na i-articulate dito sa bill na isa-isahin 'yung regulations. So, we made a general statement, a standard of how to do rate settings in each and every industry, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, pagdating lang dun sa mga benepisyo na sinabi ng ating good sponsor, oo, may mga benepisyo, pero nandun nga rin 'yung mga panganib ng pagpapasok ng mga palisiyang ito. Para sa Mamamayang Pilipino. Kaya, 'yung ganoong duality na idudulot ng pagbubukas sa dayuhang pagmamayari at kontrol ng mga importanteng mga serbisyo dito sa ating bansa, tulad na lamang ng transportasyon at komunikasyon. Ay, nangangailangan talaga ng mahigpit na regulasyon. Oo, hindi naman ito kikilala ng kung sino man 'yung nag-ooperate ng mga negosyong ito. Pantay-pantay ang turing. Pero, at the onset, 'yung ganun ba talagang mekanismo ay nandyan at ito ba ay gumagana? 'Yun po, 'yung naisanan natin na malaman mula sa ating butihing sponsor at kumaaari na sumama siya sa atin, sa panawagan sa mga regulatory agencies na ito na magpakita dito sa harap ng ating mga mambabatas pagdating sa kung gaano baka epektibo 'yung mga palisia na meron tayo ngayon sa pag-ooffer ng mas mabuting serbisyo sa mas mababang presyo para sa ating mga kababayan. Ngayon, ginaw speaker, nais ko lang maibahagi din sa ating good sponsor. Itong... Kahit pa sa ngayon, may mga limitasyon tayo pagdating sa pagpapasok ng mga dayuhang kapital sa mga importanteng pampublikong serbisyo sa ibat-ibang mga pamamaraan na sila ay nakakapasok na rin. Halimbawa, pagdating sa communications, ang China, sa pamamagitan ng kanilang Chinese Ministry of Public Security ay nagtitraina ng ating mga law enforcement personnel sa Pilipinas pagdating sa surveillance ng Mamamayan. Gayon din, sa pamamagitan ng China International Publishing Group at ng China State Council of Information Office at kanilang Ministry of Commerce, meron ang mga ino-offer na mga training at meron ang mga natapos na dalawampot isang mga journalist, mga alagad ng media na nagtrain para sa pag-i-improve ng ating communications. Gayon din, merong ilang million na mga donasyon ng mga equipment, nanggaling sa kanila ang teknolohiya at winelcom natin ang donasyon dahil alam natin kung gaano kasalat na salat. Kulang na kulang ang mga available nating mga equipment para sa mas magandang komunikasyon at gayon din sa mas magandang pagpapalaganap ng information. Gayon din, meron ang mga lusod sa Pilipinas na gumagamit ng surveillance system, surveillance systems technologies, ng mga cameras na ginagamit sa mga central command center ng mga siyudad. At ang pinakahuli, ang mismo installation o 'yung surveillance project ng DILG in partnership with Huawei. Isa pong... Isang korporasyon mula sa China na pag-i-install ng 12,000 CCTV cameras dito sa ating bansa. Ito din ay kaugnay ng pagpapatupad ng Safe Philippines Project na nitong nakaraang linggo lang ay naipabalita na nakatindig na sa ibat-ibang mga siyudad dito sa Pilipinas. Mr. Speaker, sa ngayon, sa tingin nyo po ba 'yung mga bodies na dapat nagre-regulate pagdating sa information, communication, ay maaaari na makapag-intervene para matiyak na sa mga developments na ito, sa mga technologies na ito na pinapapasok natin sa ibat-ibang industriya? Para ma-improve 'yung ating serbisyo? Kasabay po ng mga benepisyo na 'yan, ay matitiyak din natin na mapoprotektahan 'yung interes ng mga Pilipino na 'yung kanilang karapatan sa privacy ay ating maipapagtanggol at mapoprotektahan at hindi naman makokumpormiso pagdating sa pagwe-welcome naman natin ng mga donasyon na ito at ng mga teknolohiya na ito.
Mr. Speaker, um, the committee is going to propose an additional section on when it comes to national security. I will... It states that, "In the interest of national security, the president, after review, evaluation, and recommendation of the relevant government department or administrative agency, may suspend or prohibit any proposed merger or acquisition transaction or any investment in a public service that effectively results in the grant of control, whether direct or indirect, to a foreigner or a foreign corporation." That is one of the measures that we have seen that could protect our national interest. And also, we have... If we see the... Our constitution actually allows the president... Our constitution actually allows our president take over power under Section 17 of the 1987 Constitution. Under Section 17 of the 1987, "In times of national emergency, the state may temporarily take over or direct the operation of any privately-owned public utility or business affected with public interest." Pwede pong gawin ang presidente 'yan kahit wala po tong batas na 'to. In the PSA, those businesses no longer classified as public utilities are still considered a businesses affected with public interest. So, pwede pa rin 'yung presidente mag-intervene in cases of national emergency. Now, the National Security Council, under Administrative Code 1987, the NSC has the authority to formulate and coordinate the implementation of policies on matters of common interest to the various departments and agencies of the government concerned with the national security and make recommendations to the president in connection therewith and ensure that policies adopted by the Council on National Security are effectively and efficiently implemented. National Privacy Commission. Section 7 of the Data Privacy Act of 2012 delegates the following powers to the National Privacy Commission in relation to national security. Issues cease and desist orders impose a temporary or permanent ban on the processing of personal information upon finding that the processing will be detrimental to national security and public interest. Compel or petition any entity, government, agency, or instrumentality to abide by its orders or take action on a matter affecting data privacy. Marami po tayong batas, and marami pa hanggang agencies that are mandated, authorized, and in fact have the obligation to secure the national security and national interest. In addition to the provisions that I have mentioned, as well as the agencies, managing PCC and all the regulatory agencies that are mandated to have the authority over the different industries, meron pong in place. It is in place, the matter of implementation is another question. But meron po 'yan, and we are not lacking in legislation in terms of protecting our national interest and national security, Mr. Speaker.
Ginaw speaker, bilang panghuli ko pong katanungan sa ating good sponsor. Nais ko ding kunin ang kanyang kumento. Ah, tungkol dito sa balita, ito po ay lumabas kahapon. Ah, tungkol po ito sa pagmamayari ng State Grid Corporation of China ng apat napung bahagdan o 40% ng stake sa National Grid Corporation of the Philippines. At ang pinaka... Cause of worry po ng representation na ito pagdating sa balitang ito ay ang sinabi mismo sa ulat. And I quote, "The Philippines' tower grid is under the full control of the Chinese government and could be shot off in time of conflict." So, ngayon, ginaw speaker, bagamat hindi pa natin nakikita at nababasa ang kabuan na ulat na ito. Ang sinasabi po dito, 40% pa lamang 'yung kanilang kontrol, pero may kakayahan na sila na patayin sa panahon ng conflict 'yung power dito sa ating bansa. Paano pa kaya kung pahihintulutan natin ang isang daang porsyento, hindi lang pagmamayari, kontroll pagdating sa mga napakahalagang utilities, transportation, communications, na hindi lang po ginagamit at crucial sa individual na nakaunlaran kundi sa pagpoprotekta ng interes at ng soberania ng ating bansa.
Mr. Speaker, the Constitution states, and I will read Section 11, "No franchise, certificate, or any other form of authorization for the operation..." Di po ownership. "...operation of public utility shall be granted except to citizens of the Philippines or corporations or associations organized under the laws of the Philippines," and so on. Now, under the Tanyada case, fortunately or unfortunately, it has separated ownership from operation. Under the Francisco Tarrad... And versus Honorable Jesus Garcia, actually, there, it says, "The right to operate in law, there is a clear distinction between operation of public utility and the ownership of the facilities and equipment used to serve the public. Ownership is defined as a relation in law by virtue of which a thing pertaining to one person is completely subjected to his will in everything, not prohibited by law or concurrence with the rights of another." The Constitution in no uncertain terms requires a franchise for the operation of public utilities. However, it does not require a franchise before one can own facilities needed to operate a public utility so long as it does not operate them to serve the public. Meaning, Mr. Speaker, currently with or without the Amendment to the Public Service Act. Siniperate po 'yung ownership from operation. And now, as you can observe, like what is happening with China Telecom or however, whatever just the name is, they could own actually the facilities already right now. This is not because of the Public Service Act or the Amendment to the Public Service Act. This is by jurisprudence, and this has been followed, allowed already. The right to operate a public utility may exist independently and separately from the ownership of the facilities thereof. Kaya, nandyan na po 'yan. And we cannot, maybe if we do another legislation to amend or to change the... To clarify their jurisprudence or to alter the jurisprudence then be... So, pero ngayon po, that is not because of Public Service Act. Yes, there may be threat, but let's not just... I would not want to concentrate on it to China kasi marami din. Baka, if it comes to Europe, from Europe investors, it could be a threat as well. But we have... We do have safeguards in place. And should these safeguards be properly be implemented, I think our industries and our fellow Filipinos would be well protected. Basta lang po, ma-implement lang na maayos na mga agencies na 'to, 'yung responsibilities nila.
Ginaw speaker, totoo po na legal ang ginawa ng China no pagdating dito. Ngunit, kung ito naman ay magiging sagabal pagdating sa pagtatanggol ng interes ng ating bansa at sa pagtatanggol ng ating interes ng Mamamayang Pilipino, no kailangan na po nating magdalawang isip no? Pagdating sa pagsusulong nito. At gayon din, ang sponsor na rin ang nagbanggit kung gaano kahalaga dito ang maayos na implementasyon, regulasyon, at pagpapalakas ng mga ahensya na magtitiyak na tunay na magkakaroon ng mas maayos na serbisyo, mas mababang presyo. At kung ano man ang kikitain mula sa pagpapayabong ng mga negosyong ito, ay mapapakinabangan ng bayan muna natin at mapapakinabangan ng Mamamayang Pilipino. Maraming salamat sa pagkakataon na ito, Mr. Speaker. Maraming salamat sa ating good sponsor. Muli, nananawagan po tayo na pagdating sa pagpapasa ng batas na ito o hindi pa pagpapasa ng batas na ito, kailangan po nating mas mahigpit pa at mas susi itong pag-aralan. Maraming salamat, ginaw speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend consideration of House Bill Number 78 under Committee Report Number 5. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? Chair is none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the election of the following members to the following committees. To the Committee on Public Information, as chairperson, Congressman Ron Salo. As vice-chairpersons, Congresswoman Amihilda Sangkopan, Congressman Alfred Vargas, Congressman Mike Defensor. As members for the majority, Congresswoman Sol Aragonis, Congressman Christopher Go, Congressman Jose Tejada, Congressman Braden Biron, Congressman Ramon Guico III, Congressman Ian D., Congressman Michael D., Congressman Alan Reyes, Congressman Alan T., Congressman Cesar Jimenez, Congressman Jake Villia, Congressman Duke Frasco, Congressman Ismael Mangungadatu, Congressman Gavini Pancho, and Congressman Rehan Sakularan. To the Committee on Public Accounts, vice-chairperson, Congressman Rodante Marcoletta, Congressman Leandro Madrona. Member, as member, Congressman Presley DeJesus. To the Committee on Accounts, as vice-chairperson, Congresswoman Florida Robes. As member, Congressman Jose Tevez Jr., Congressman Anzarudin Adyong. To the Committee on Trade, as vice-chairman, Congressman Alan T. To the Committee on Labor, as member, Congressman Alan T. And Congressman Romeo Momo. To the Committee on Agriculture and Food, as vice-chairman, chairperson, Congressman Anzarudin Adyong. As member, Congressman McNell Lusutan. To the Special Committee on Basis Conversion, as vice-chairperson, Congressman Geraldine Roman. To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education, as vice-chairperson, Congressman McNell Lusutan. And Congressman Anzarudin Adyong. To the Special Committee on East Asia Growth Area, as vice-chairperson, Congressman Sherlin Banyas Nogralis. To the Committee on Agriculture and Food, as member, as members, Congressman Sherlin Banyas Nogralis, Congressman Josephine Ramirez Sato. To the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources, as member, Congressman Sherlin Banyas Nogralis. To the... Ay, to the Committee on Tourism, as member, Congressman Sherlin Banyas Nogralis. To the Committee on Health, as member, Congressman Sherlin Banyas Nogralis. To the Committee on Games and Amusement, as member, Congressman Sherlin Banyas Nogralis. To the Committee on Housing and Urban Development, as member, Congresswoman Sherlin Banyas Nogralis. To the Committee on Indigenous Cultural Communities and Indigenous Peoples, as member, Congressman Sherlin Banyas Nogralis. To the Committee on Indigenous Cultural Communities and Indigenous Peoples, as Member Congressman Sherlin Banyas Nogralis. To the Committee on Veterans Affairs and Welfare, as Member Congressman Sherlin Banyas Nogralis. To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture, as Member Congressman Sherlin Banyas Nogralis and Congressman McNell Lusotan. To the Committee on Natural Resources, as Member Congressman Sherlin Banyas Nogralis and Congressman Josephine Ramirez Sato. To the Committee on Transportation, as Member Congressman Sherlin Banyas Nogralis. To the Committee on Micro, Small, and Medium Enterprises, as Member Congressman Sherlin Banyas Nogralis. To the Committee on Science and Technology, as Member Congressman Sherlin Banyas Nogralis. To the Committee on Social Services, as Member Congressman Sherlin Banyas Nogralis. To the Committee on Trade and Industry, as Member Congressman Sherlin Banyas Nogralis. To the Committee on Women and Gender Equality, as Member Congressman Sherlin Banyas Nogralis. To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education, as Member Congressman Sherlin Banyas Nogralis. And to the Committee on West Philippine Sea, as Member Congressman McNell Lusotan.
Is there an objection? Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Deputy Minority Leader, Honorable Kit Belmonte.
The Honorable Belmonte is recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, in behalf of the minority, I move to elect to the Committee on Public Information, the Honorable Gabriel Bordado as senior member, the Honorable Franz Castro, and the Honorable Arnie Tevez.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Likewise, Mr. Speaker, I move to withdraw the nomination of the Honorable Bing Umani from the Committee on Public Accounts and replace her in lieu of the Honorable Bing Umani, the Honorable Bayani Fernando, as senior member for the minority.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Likewise, Mr. Speaker, I move to withdraw the nomination of the Honorable Isagani Amatong to the Committee on Foreign Affairs and replace him with the Honorable Argel Kabatbak. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Furthermore, Mr. Speaker, I move to withdraw the nomination to the Committee of Veteran Affairs of the Honorable Isagani Amatong and replace him, in lieu of him, I move that we elect the Honorable Bing Umani. I so move, Mr. Speaker, your honor.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we leave of the House. We leave of the House. I move that we open the privilege hour.
Any objection? The chair hears none. The privilege hour is hereby open.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Gabi Bordado to avail of the privilege hour.
The Honorable Bordado is recognized for his privileged speech. Okay. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, everybody expected it. Yet, when President Rodrigo Roa Duterte fired Vice President Lenny Herona Robredo as co-chair of the Interagency Committee on Anti-illegal Drugs, or ICAD, on the early evening of November 24th, a lot of people were stunned and saddened. Mr. Speaker, it may be recalled that most of the allies and supporters of the Vice President urged her to reject outright the offer of the President for her to head the ICAD. But then, she accepted it, reassuring her countrymen that, to quote her, "I am ready to bear all this because I can save one innocent life. My principles and heart are telling me that I should give it a try." And Vice President Roberto wasted no time in settling into her new role. Mr. Speaker, within a brief period of 19 days, Vice President Roberto, as pointed out by a major media outlet, convened all the government agencies under ICAD, met with the officials of the United Nations Office on Drug and Crime and Community-Based Drug Rehab Alliance, otherwise known as COBRA, the United States Embassy, including the Federal Bureau of Investigation, Drug Enforcement Agencies, Department of State, and the United States Agency for International Development, the Development, the Department of the Interior and Local Government, the Philippine National Police, the Department of Health, the Philippine Drug Enforcement Agency, and the Dangerous Drugs Board, to discuss pertinent matters on the war versus illegal drugs. She also visited various communities and sent two letters to the President. By all indications, Mr. Speaker, the Vice President did take seriously her earlier pronouncement of tweaking the anti-illegal drugs program. Then came the bombshell last Sunday night. The President fired the Vice President less than three weeks after her appointment as ICAD chief. Yesterday, the Vice President, in a media meeting right after she visited a drug rehabilitation center in her home province of Camarini Sur, stated that, and I quote, "If they think that this is over, they don't know me. I have just begun." Unquote. Mr. Speaker, for his part, Justice Secretary Minardo Guevara said, "Personally, I feel so bad about what happened. There was an opportunity for the administration and even the opposition to band together and put up a united front against a common enemy, which is illegal drugs. But you know, circumstances caused this venture to crash before it could even take flight. So I feel bad about it." Unquote. Mr. Speaker, at the end of the day, however, regardless of the President's most recent decision, the opportunity for all of us, not only the President and the Vice President, to shed our differing opinions and affiliations in order to scuttle, once and for all, the drug menace in the country still stands. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the privileged speech of the Honorable Gabriel Bordado be referred to the Committee on Rules for Appropriate Action. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we terminate the privilege hour. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The chair hears none. The privilege hour is terminated.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 59 under Committee Report Number 73 and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The Secretary General will please read the title of the measure.
House Bill Number 59, an act setting the minimum paid-up capital and locally-produced stock inventory requirements for foreign retail businesses, enterprises, amending for the purpose Republic Act Number 8762, otherwise known as the Retail Trade Liberalization Act of 2000.
Mr. Speaker, to sponsor this said measure, I move that we recognize the Honorable Wes Gachalian of the First District of Venezuela, as well as the Honorable Victoria Yap of the Second District of Tarlac. So move, Mr. Speaker.
The Honorable Gachalian and Yap are hereby recognized for their sponsorship.
Mr. Speaker, the parliamentary status of our bill is that we are in the period of interpolation. And with that, I move that we recognize the Honorable Stela Luz Kimbo of Marquina, the Second District of Marquina City, to interpolate our sponsors.
The Honorable Stela Kimbo is recognized for interpolation.
Mr. Speaker, will the sponsor yield to a few questions?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, just for context, can the good sponsor confirm that the purpose of the bill is to open up the retail sector to foreign competition, thereby increasing foreign investments, generating jobs, reducing prices, and increasing or widening choices for consumers?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, that is correct.
And, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Sponsor, is there any particular reason for why it is the retail sector that you wish to be opened up to foreign competition? Mr. Sponsor, for example, why not the manufacturing sector or why not the services sector?
Mr. Speaker, the Foreign Trade Liberalization Act was already passed into law. Somehow, through the years, we've gotten data, actual experience of the country, that it did not really push through with the model that was passed before. That is why we are here, Mr. Speaker, together with the Chairman on Trade and Industry, to correct and improve the situation for the retail sector, but more importantly, for the consumer sector or the entire Filipino citizens, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, Mr. Sponsor, thank you for that background information. But would you agree that one reason for why it is the retail sector that needs to be opened up is because in recent times, particularly over the last year, the retail sector has been growing so fast, in fact overtaking the manufacturing sector? Like, for example, in 2017, the manufacturing sector grew at 8.42%, while the retail sector grew at 7.23%. But by 2018, that was reversed. Manufacturing grew at 4.93%, but retail overtook manufacturing and grew at 6%. So could it be that we really need to open up the retail sector so as not to pass up on further opportunities to increase growth in the retail sector?
If the statement of the madam interpolators is on the affirmative that we open up the retail to improve the position of our exports, then I totally agree, Mr. Speaker. Thank you for that.
Mr. Speaker, Mr. Sponsor, under the current law, would you agree that despite the Retail Trade Liberalization Act of 2000, it is quite difficult for a foreign entity to participate in our retail sector? For example, if a foreign entity wishes to participate in the retail sector, it would need a minimum paid-up capital of 2.5 million US dollars. And in addition, a per-store investment requirement of 830,000 US dollars. Moreover, retail businesses that would require less than 2.5 million US dollars in paid-up capital or those that do not have access to such an amount cannot in any way participate in the local retail market. So this very restrictive entry conditions is what the good sponsor wishes to change through this bill. Am I right? Am I correct, Mr. Sponsor?
Yes, for many reasons, Mr. Speaker, but the gist of it would be that.
So, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Sponsor, the bill proposes to change the paid-up capital threshold from 2.5 million US dollars to 200,000 US dollars or 10 million pesos.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, that is the one passed by the committee. And it is just the same level of amount that we passed a month ago with the Foreign Investments Act, Mr. Speaker.
So, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Sponsor, can you enlighten us as to what is really wrong with the current law? We might wish to note that when the Retail Trade Liberalization Act was passed in 2000, FDIs or foreign direct investments actually increased from nothing, from virtually nothing, to 31.33 million US dollars one year after the passage of that law. However, FDI inflows saw an abrupt decline the following year to only 1.83 million US dollars in 2002. And moreover, in a position paper by the Joint Foreign Chambers of the Philippines, they note that over the last 19 years, only 43 foreign retail investments have been recorded by the DTI and creating only around 22,000 jobs. So, Mrs. Sponsor, can you tell us if, what is currently, what is wrong with the current law?
Mr. Speaker, that is a very good point that was raised by our dear interpreter, that the Retail Trade Liberalization Act, or RA 8762, passed in 2000, was enacted to promote both Filipino and foreign investors to forge efficient and competitive retail trade in the interest of empowering the Filipino consumer through lower prices, higher-quality goods, better services, and wider choices. The initial success of the RA 8762, as mentioned, resulted in foreign direct investments in the retail sector surging to 31 million dollars in 2000 from a zero base the previous year. However, inflows saw an abrupt decline the following year at only 1.83 million dollars. Many reasons for this, Mr. Speaker, but I guess your inference on this matter would be as good as mine. One would be taxes, two is gaano kadali ba talaga gumawa ng business lalo na kumaliit kala negosyante kumapasok at 2.5, not the bigger ones. What more, kung mas maliiteng capital mo, if you can afford to lose, it's a gambit. It's a gamble to go into the Philippines and why not other ASEAN countries that also has markets? It is for this reason, Mr. Speaker, that we wish to change and amend the, I'd say not really outdated 2000 law, but some of its sections that has been previously mentioned before. For example, in the arena of ASEAN countries, marami po rito talaga halos wala ng limit, open na. In fact, Mr. Speaker, meron pa rin foreign capitalization limit of 40% siyempre. Pero, ang mangyayari dito ay liniliitan lang natin. Sa ibang mga bansa, and I would like to mention, Brunei, there's no restriction on FDI. Cambodia, Indonesia, only in large-scale retail. So 'yung maliliit nila na medyo kinatatakot ang ibang ating mga kasamahan, ay natatakot sila. ay natatakot sila baka tamaan 'yung mga sari-sari stores, Mr. Speaker. For that matter, may I argue, Mr. Speaker, that hindi po sila tatamaan. Ang talagang intention dito would be, pag naglalagay tayo ng mga restrictions, 'yung mga katulad ng 2.5, tapos 40%, ang nangyayari ko, kawawa ang Pilipino at the end of the day. Bakit? Wala silang talagang totooong choice, diba? Actually, kung kinakatakot natin ng mga maliliit na produkto na sinasabi natin posible manggaling sa ibat-ibang probinsya, sa ibat-ibang lulawigan, 'yung mga pagkain na ginagawa sa ilocos, sa Quezon, at sa iba pang mga lugar, Laguna, makakabuti nga na papasukin ito mga maliliit na retailers coming from different countries if talagang maalis natin 'yung perception sa Pilipinas na ang hirap magtayo ng negosyo, kukuhah ka pa lamang ng permit sa barangay. But of course, I congratulate the 17th Congress for passing the ease of doing business. And sana talagang itong pagkakataon nito, magbago ang perception. So, ibinaba, ito po ang recommendation ng DTI. Kung ako personal tatanungin, ayoko na lang lagyan pa ng 200,000, but that is putting it aside, that is just my personal opinion. Kung talagang gusto natin ng mas mababang presyo, palagay ko naman ay bubuksan natin ang ating isipan na talagang for the past years, which is about 18 to 19 years, wala po nangyari sa investment natin. Samantalang, sa ibang mga bansa, nagsilakihan sila. And if I'm inside, by contrast, the ASEAN nation as a whole received the largest FDI. So talagang ASEAN ang target, malaking market tayo, no? 38.9 billion dollars in the wholesale and retail trade sector for the year 2017 alone, growing 75% from 22 billion dollars and thereby overtaking the traditional main recipients of FDI, namely the finance and manufacturing sectors, as I indicate in one of those mentioned by our dear Interpreter. In this amount, however, the Philippines was only able to garner 83.1 million dollars or a decimal 0.2% of the total FDI to the ASEAN wholesale and retail sector. Mr. Speaker, I can go on for many minutes to talk about the benefits of consumer choice and competition. Bababa ang presyo, pero ang tingin ko naman ang retail trade, or trade in general, is not only one way, we shouldn't be afraid na papasok lang ang goods nila. For example, Thailand, which lowered its commitment, investment commitment, to 500,000 baht. Tayo, nilo-lowern natin ngayon ng 200,000 dollars, which is about 10 million, but 500,000 baht is only 850,000. What happened to Thailand? All over the world, 'yung kanilang mga produkto maliliit na nagagaling sa ibat-ibang probinsya nila, lumabas. Kasi, kung ako trader, papasok ko sa Pilipinas, sasaliksikin ko rin 'yung mga competitive products na dadalhin ko sa ibang bansa. Yan din ang gusto natin mangyari dito. With, at the end of the day, with consumer choice, kung talagang masarap 'yung potato chips ng Amerikano. By the way, Mr. Speaker, without saying, lumabas po sa kumihiring ito, na karamihan ko na nagbebenta, or against, dito sa bill na ito, are large retailers, the Philippine Retailers Association, na karamihan na kanilang binebenta, imported na rin. Why not, at the end of the day, allow each and every country? To date, Mr. Speaker, no country has disallowed Filipino products to enter their markets. But without those traders, without those retailers seeking, knowing the Filipinos coming here and learning the ropes of how Filipino ways in manufacturing may improve, gumanda ang ating produkto, palagay ko, tulad ng Vietnam, tulad ng Thailand, lalabas at gaganda palalo ang mga produkto natin, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Sponsor, magandang nabanggit mo na wala naman talaga sa listahan ng complaints ng foreign investors ang high paid-up capital, minimum paid-up capital requirements. If you look at that list, what is mentioned there would be, for example, too many permits, or maybe high taxes, or perhaps corrupt government agencies or corrupt regulators. Wala naman po doon sa listahan ang high minimum paid-up capital requirements. However, alam naman natin na napakaliit ng nakukuhang share ng Pilipinas sa FDI sa buong ASEAN. And as you mentioned, Brunei has lower thresholds as well as Indonesia. And if I may share, Mr. Sponsor, some more information on the ASEAN countries. So as we can see here, so you're proposing that we reduce our thresholds to 200,000 US dollars? Pero sa totoo alam po, sa Indonesia, mas mababa. At the moment, it's 177,000 US dollars. In Thailand, it's only 66,000 US dollars. In Vietnam, it has the lowest threshold at 10,000 dollars. Malaysia is 120,000. Singapore is 36,700. So, malaki talaga, Mr. Sponsor, ang pagbaba from 2.5 million US dollars to 200,000, as you are proposing. But looking at this matrix, and including Brunei, ano kaya ang basis po natin, Mr. Sponsor, for why you are choosing 200,000?
Mr. Speaker, again, as we're just setting it to be consistent, the same, in fact, the same value as that of the Foreign Investment Act, to be consistent with the law. I share, Mr. Speaker, as I said a while ago, my personal opinion would be to do away with any minimum investment. Anyway, at the end of the day, it will create more entrepreneur Filipinos. Why? Because under the law, foreign ownership should be restricted to about 40%. So, kukuhas siya ng partner na Filipino, kukuhas siya ng mga taga ilocos, or possibly sa Mindanao, sa Visayas, may mga maganda produkto at madepelop ito. I think the dynamics of that doesn't happen overnight, Mr. Speaker. Pero, nangyayari sa ibang bansa at kaya na huli tayo. Pero, to answer again, 200,000 dollars, Mr. Speaker, iba 'yung personal ko, pero ito po ang sinusugod na Committee on Trade and Industry na back up ng ating mga executive agencies sa government, namely the DTI, the BOI, and of course, the Department of Finance, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Sponsor, Mr. Speaker. 'Yung pong proposed 200,000 dollar threshold, marami pong, may mga sectors po, no? Tulad ng Philippine Retailers Association, na mukhang nababahala, at ang tingin nila ay baka masyadong mababa. So, in fact, in a position paper, they state that the proposal, and I quote, "The proposal intends to strip the protection extended by law to micro, small, and medium-sized retail enterprises against foreign competition, of which many are unprepared." So natatakot po sila na unprepared ang ating mga maliliit na retailers. So I'm wondering, Mr. Sponsor, would you agree with this statement? Talaga bang matatamaan ang karamihan ng mga local na retail establishments?
Mr. Speaker, I thank the good Interpreter for a very good question, valid question. And that is, 'yung maliliit ba natin ang tatamaan? Ang, hindi namakaduda-duda. Ang napansin ko lamang dun sa mga kumihirings ng kinawa ng Trade and Industry, wala naman kung maliit na pumunta. Ang dumating po dun, 'yung malalaki. In other words, Mr. Speaker, I think there are many studies to cite, and I think the good Interpreter knows this, being an economist, that pag naglalagay ka ng mas maraming barriers to entry, katulad ng 2.5, samantalang ang labanan ho, tulad niyan nasabi niya, mukhang mataas pa tayo sa 200,000. Kanina lamang ho sa aking opisina, ang BOI tinanong ko personally, anong mali sa batas dito sa personal opinion niyo? Ang sabi nila, dapat 300,000 dollars. Sabi ko, mali kayo diyan, diba? Eh, pinasa niyo sa amin 'yung Foreign Investment Act at 200,000 dollars, tapos sasabihin 'yung 300. Mr. Speaker, ang tatamaan ho rito talaga, na natatakot, 'yung dumating sa hearing, at 'yan ho 'yung Philippine Retailers Association. Ang tatamaan ho dito 'yung mga malalaki. Sapagkat efficiency-wise, pwedeng labanan na maliliit. At ngayon, kung ang pinag-uusapan natin is inclusivity, magtrickle down, we know that this law is better because you have lesser capital and you will partner with Filipino entrepreneurs having lesser capital. In fact, 200,000 dollars, Mr. Speaker, personally, maliit pa nga eh. Pero 'yung 2.5 million dollars, by data, by experience, showed that the Philippine Retailers Association, karamihan na binebenta rin nila, marami rin lahat ng imported na nan doon. Talaga ba nilang prinitiksonan ang mga maliliit nating ano? Baka sila pa nga 'yung kalaban ng mas maliliit na negosyante rito. So, kung ganun na lang din, i-open up na natin for competition. At the end of the day, Mr. Speaker, I can guarantee, not only by economic laws, that competition will bring the entire Filipino consumer a better choice of quality from amongst the different nations that can enter, whether it's big or small.
Thank you, Mr. Sponsor. Would you agree that based on this next slide, based on this slide here, would you agree that, if you think about it, less than 1% of all retail establishments will be adversely affected by the proposed amendments? So if you look at this table, there are over 1 million establishments in the retail sector. If you look at the first row, which would pertain to the micro establishments, there are 887,000 of those, and their asset size is up to 3 million pesos. So clearly, this is only 1/3 of your proposed threshold. So clearly, your micro establishments would not be directly affected by your proposal. And if you look at the numbers, this is 89% of all establishments. And in addition, Mr. Speaker, there's a provision in the law that states that all of the paid-up capital, meaning all of the 10 million pesos, will have to be fully utilized by the business and will therefore constitute part of the asset base. And clearly, you'll need more assets to run your business. You will need, for example, your inventory, you need goods to sell. So which means, the asset base of your potential entrant would far exceed the threshold of 10 million pesos. And in which case, if you look again at the slide, because your small establishments would have an asset size of up to 15 million pesos, more or less, your micro and your small establishments would be still protected despite your proposal to considerably reduce the threshold from 2.5 million dollars to 200,000 dollars. So, sa tingin ko po, Mr. Sponsor, Mr. Speaker, ang tingin ko na lang pong pwedeng maapektohan ng pagbaba ng threshold ay 'yun lang pong 0.49% at 0.48% of all establishments, meaning just less than 1% of the retail establishments. Is this a statement that you would agree with, Mr. Sponsor?
That data coming from the Philippine Statistics Authority, Mr. Speaker, I think is unassailable. And I thank the good Interpreter for actually giving me this data that indeed, there are measures under this, and hopefully it is the wise choice to set it at 200,000 dollars. So therefore, Mr. Speaker, I totally agree with the Interpreter.
Mr. Speaker, it's not a perfect analogy, pero siguro pwede natin isipin 'yung panahon nung dumating po ang pure gold sa ating mga distrito. Hindi naman po naapektohan ang mga sari-sari stores, hindi po sila nagsara. Sari-sari stores still thrive because they provide a service, which are, they provide accessibility to families. And not only that, they also provide a credit line, an informal credit line. Ang natamaan lang po ng pagdating ng pure gold sa, at least sa aming distrito, 'yung mga medium-sized groceries. Kaso nga lang po, ang tanong, eh, ano magagawa natin? Eh, mas mataas talaga ang presyo ng mga bilihin sa medium-sized groceries. So talagang panahon na para buksan ang ating retail sector to competition. Dahil ang kinabang talaga diyan ay ating mga consumers. So, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to move on to my next question. Section 4 refers specifically to high-end products. In particular, it removes certain qualifications for foreign retailers of high-end products. I think it also calls for monitoring by NEDA of foreign retailers, again, of high-end products. So I'm wondering, Mr. Sponsor, is there any particular reason for why section 4 is limited to high-end products?
Mr. Speaker, again, a very good point, highlighting the changes that we are attempting to make. Actually, the bill, this bill was already passed to the 17th Congress, Mr. Speaker. However, we note, and I think it is the interest of the Interpreter to hear that the initial intention was to limit the requirements under section 8 to foreign retailers of high-end goods. But with the proposed deletion of requirements under section 8, from 8A to 8C, the title, "The Use of Foreign Retailers of High-End Goods", will be deleted during the period of amendments, hopefully, and the old title qualification of foreign retailers. Mr. Speaker, as a, diniside na ng Committee na 'yung mga amendments ipropose na nandito sa plenario, sapagkat ginamit 'yung section, wait, 28? Section 48 doon sa Committee, Mr. Speaker. So, for the information of our Interpreter, ay, papalitan na po ito, ng qualification of foreign retailers will be restored after the proposed amendments in section 8. What will remain is the reciprocity requirement which will apply to all foreign retailers, not just retailers of high-end goods, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Sponsor, for that clarification. I would also like to clarify, Mr. Sponsor, if section 8 still has this provision on the prequalification of foreign retailers that has not been deleted, am I right, Mr. Sponsor?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I think the wisdom of the old law until now that will be carried with this, we will still have to set some requirements, especially siguro checking on the capital, ano 'yung intention, kasi meron mga kinakailangan masunod sa ating batas. So, while the point being taken by the Interpreter is bakit pa tayo marami nilalagay ng mga requirement, kaya bandang huli 'yung mga investor na to turn off? Mr. Speaker, in the IRR, I think we will be able to propose, or I am very much open to any proposed amendments to reduce the requirements so as to limit 'yung dami ng mga hinihingi pagka sa Pilipinas ka nagbubukas ng negosyo, unlike sa ibang lugar.
Mr. Speaker, I'm happy to hear that response from the good sponsor. Ayaw naman natin, binuksan nga natin ang retail sector sa pamamagitan ng pagbaba ng threshold para sa paid-up capital. Pero naman, dinagdagan naman natin, or pagkahaba-haba naman po ang listahan ng qualifications. So, thank you, Mr. Sponsor, for that clarification. And yes, I may give you some proposals on that.
In due time, Mr. Speaker, I think I too agree that some of those imposed in the IRR should be removed, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Sponsor. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Sponsor. Under the same Section 4, the amended provision states that only nationals from, or juridical entities formed, or incorporated in countries which allow the entry of Filipino retailers shall be allowed to engage in retail trade in the Philippines. So, 'yung reciprocity nga po. Do we have information on the countries that currently do not allow the entry of Filipino retailers?
Um, actually, uh, BOI and the DTI, we've asked, but, uh, personally, I asked the representatives of the BOI. They do not know of any country that does not allow any of our goods in that country not to be sold. So, so far, that is, uh, the best, uh, answer I can take. But, Mr. Speaker, I will furnish the, uh, interpreter, our good interpreter, the copies when, when the data from DTI officially arrives.
Thank you, Mr. Sponsor. So, um, it's good to hear that, uh, information, that currently there are no countries, there is no country at this point, um, that does not allow the entry of Filipino retailers. That is actually my last question, Mr. Speaker. I would just like to end by thanking the good sponsor and congratulating him on this bill. Um, I really pray for the swift passage of this measure so that this could actually, um, spur a more dynamic retail sector. And I guess I really also want to say that competition is always good for our country, but I also wish to manifest a caveat that the desired intent of this measure to attract more foreign investors may not be immediately realized because there are still many anti-competitive structures, particularly in the retail sector. So, for example, you have mall owners that are also owners of retail brands in their own malls. So, mahirap naman po na pagpumasok ang isang bagong foreign brand, baka naman pahirapan siya ng mga mall owners, at bigyan siya halimbawa. Pwedeng idenai siya ng retail space, or, um, pwede namang pagbigyan siya, bigyan siya ng retail space, pero ang bibigay sa kanyang location ay napakapangit naman po. So, um, we would, uh, since the Philippine Competition Commission, which has jurisdiction actually over that matter, which is called abuse of dominant possession, and since the PCC is under the jurisdiction, or, or sorry, the Committee on Trade and Industry has oversight functions over the PCC, sana naman po tulungan ng, uh, committee, or bigyan ng direction at guidance ng committee and PCC para matugunan ang ganitong klasing, um, competition concerns. So, 'yun lang po, um, muli, uh, congratulations po. Um, it's really high time that we promote competition in our retail markets. Um, more competition would force our firms to be more efficient, and also, more importantly, to be more mindful of quality. It should also force our government to help businesses become more productive by properly choosing market niches where they can compete more effectively. Government should help business that way, rather than protect them by way of high minimum paid-up capital for foreign businesses. So, 'yun lang po, thank you very much po.
Thank you, Madam Interpreter, for your very, uh, good and cerebral discussions on the matter. Sir Speaker, being a staunch advocate of open competition would really bring down the prices for the betterment of the entire Filipino.
Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration of House Bill Number 59.
Any objection? Chair is none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adjourn session until November 27, tomorrow, at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. So, move, Mr. Speaker.
Session is adjourned until November 27, 3 o'clock in the afternoon.